All right, I call to order the second of April 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Istanis, please call the roll.
Dr. Huskins. Dr. Huskins is an at-large member. Mr. May?
Here.
Mr. May represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Everson represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Rogers represents the Berkeley District. Mr. Polster?
Here.
Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Haldeman? Dr. Allman?
Here.
Dr. Allman represents the Roberts District and will be presiding over this meeting as Vice Chair of the Commission. I'm Susan Istanis. I'm the Director of Planning for the County and it's my pleasure to serve as the Secretary to the Commission. Sitting to my left is Ms. Liz Parman, Deputy County Attorney. Madam Vice Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Istanis. I will open the public comments. The public comment section of the agenda is for topics that are not subject to public hearing. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have any speaker cards for the public comment?
We do not.
Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission in the public comment section? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment. The next item on our agenda is reports of the Commission. There was no Policy Committee meeting last month. Mr. Rogers, do you have a report for the DRC?
I do, Madam Chair. I called this month's regular meeting of the, excuse me, the Development Review Committee to order at approximately 4:08 on 26 March 2025. The committee members present were Frank Polster, myself, and upon a motion, Scott May, who participated remotely. Also present was Planning Commission Member Crystal Huskins. You and staff present included Morgan Reisinger, Senior Planner, Beth Clapper, and Will Alveston. We approved the minutes of the 23 October 2024 session. There was no old business. There were two items of new business. The first one was a sign. That's sign dash 25 dash 0032 of the Mason Park subdivision. This is an outward proposal for an outward street-facing sign. It's submitted for the subdivision on the Jamestown Road Service Road. The proposed design is a non-illuminated monument four feet tall. The sign is proposed to be installed to the west of Mason Park Drive between the Jamestown Road right-of-way and the multi-use trail which is on the property. That location is free of any current improvements or landscaping. The existing proffers on that subdivision included two requirements which are relevant to the sign permit. One, 150-foot-wide buffer along Jamestown Road, and any entrance features or signage located within that buffer would require approval from us, the Development Review Committee. There is a further stipulation that the monument-style sign, the maximum height of four feet, to be first approved by the Director of Planning. Staff opined that the proposed location of the entrance sign would not disrupt the existing landscaping which is within the Jamestown Road buffer. Furthermore, the proposed sign elevation had already been approved by the Director of Planning, as had its design. Staff recommended the DRC approve this installation of the sign within the 150-foot-wide Jamestown Road buffer as depicted in the application, and after discussion, a motion passed 3-0 approving the location of that sign. The second item of new business was C dash 25 0002 Solara Woods Water and Sewer Subdivision Exception Request. We learned that the applicant had requested that matter be deferred to our May 21st, 2025 meeting in order to allow them further time to address comments they have received from the fire department. So a motion was made to defer that matter to May 21, 2025, and that motion passed 3 to 0. On a voice vote, the meeting was adjourned at approximately 4:20 PM.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are deemed to be non-controversial. We have three items on the consent agenda, which are SPLN dash 22 dash 0012 Ford's Village Phases A and B, the minutes of the March 5th, 2025 regular meeting, and the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 regular meeting. Does anyone wish to pull an agenda item? Yes, Mr. Polster?
I'd like to pull SPLN 22 dash 0012 Ford's Village Phase A and B.
Okay. Pull that. So that leaves two items for the consent agenda. The minutes of the March 5th, 2025 regular meeting and the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 regular meeting. Does anyone wish to pull anything else? Do I have a motion? Okay, motion to approve. We will do a voice vote for this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So the next item on our agenda are the public hearings, and we have six.
No, no, I pulled the item, so I'm now asking for the applicant or the engineer to please come up and answer some questions.
I apologize. First time chairing everyone, so.
How are you this evening?
Doing well.
Well, I have to compliment you on the design plans that you had. I didn't realize we were going to have 72 pages to go through for your design, and they're extremely detailed. But I wanted to bring up the original one that's up there right now. And you know I had some concerns about this before, given the storms we've had and the washouts that closed out both your neighborhood as well as the other one down on News Road coming across from Powhatan Creek for it. And having voiced that concern, there was, there now, you had conceptually put two BMPs together for it, and they're depicted in the middle-right bottom and then the upper-left by the CRRC. And of course, the other one was kind of a dry pot. If we go to the next one, which is sheet five out of the current proposed design here, and there's a change here, obviously, with the addition of that other BMP on the upper side of the diagram almost at the top for it. But what was interesting to me when I looked at this thing was the way the drainage ended up coming out and the extensions into the wetlands areas and into the creek beds, specifically the one on the lower right-hand side coming down there. And I noticed that coming off of the original BMP itself, there's a spillway for it. And I can't tell if from the outfall going into the creek exactly what the treatment's going to be for that, whether it's going to be riprock or what.
Fortunately, I'm probably not the best person to address that specific concern. I definitely can get back with you on an answer specific to the drainage and the design. Obviously, we've worked with staff pretty extensively to put these plans together. But you're talking about the wet pond. I guess it's plan right?
I think it's two, isn't it? Yeah, to the right. There you go.
This one or the?
Both of them have outfalls into the creek. And of course, the CRC one is to be built.
So I think the outfalls, my understanding is those outfalls are piped, and then there's a riprap apron where the pipe comes out. And you can notice here that there is a normal riser like you'd see in a pond, and that's piped out. And then there's also a piped emergency spillway out of this pond. But I believe the outfalls that are piped, so they have a riprap outlet protection at the toe of the slope where there's an outfall.
Here's why I asked. As you well know and you're aware of the Powhatan watershed plant. And when you go to look at this parcel, it doesn't look like the Santech folks were able to get in there because it's private property. And so I have no idea what the erosion or stream bed looks like that comes off of that bottom leg of the Powhatan to the left. And then, of course, there's another leg that comes down from the right, too. So there's two stream beds that are actually combining down there. And so, given where you are in the process, there is hardly any way that I can object to doing this. But what I can do is ask you, on behalf of the future Homeowners Association, which is not part of Ford's Colony that will be established there, that you at least take a look at the condition of the stream bed to see what its current state is.
We can definitely do that.
Okay. Now, in talking with Ms. Small this afternoon, one of the other things we talked about is that as part of the design point, she, I asked her whether or not it's possible to be able to put a condition where the outfalls would be inspected over a period of time to see what the impact is in terms of erosions of the stream bed, which is something that we're doing with our solar farms. The last two we've approved over a 10-year period for it. This stream bed, as you well know from the 2008 study that was done on the Powhatan, talked about the hydrology and the damage. As a matter of fact, before this project occurred, there was a proffer on here for stream monitoring that went away. And so I still have the same concern that I have for the health of that watershed, as well as the future impacts that it may or may not have. So I would appreciate it if you had a chance to try to make an evaluation of what those stream beds look like. So the condition is?
Quantified.
Exactly. And so if there is future damage to it for, you know, we'll be able to say when it happened, whatever. Because both you and I know we could get a hurricane in, and that stream bed could go, you know, all the way off of it just because of the water. My other concern at that point was, it still is, is that when we do the configurations for our stormwater facilities, the rainfall period is based on the old Atlas 14, which you know was out of date. And so when we did the Powhatan Watershed Master Plant, we actually went in and did a 20% increase to be able to see what the non-tidal, entitled flooding would look like for this. And so once again, I still have this problem with making sure that we're at least paying attention to what's going on there and then taking the appropriate actions as they take place. So I would appreciate if you could take a look at that in conjunction with Ms. Small's office.
Will do. Feel free to reach out to me or I'm in my office and we can discuss.
You all have been very good, very good about this over the past. That's why I'm couching it in this way of asking you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve SPLN 22 dash 0012 Ford's Village Phase A and B.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of SPLN dash 22 dash 0012. I will do a voice vote again for this. So all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Great. The next item on our agenda are the public hearings. Now we are at the public hearings. So we have six items on the agenda, and the first item is SUP dash 24 dash 0034 7649 Cypress Drive Rental of Rooms. We will begin with the staff presentation. Ms. Costello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Ms. Sharon Elliott has applied for a special use permit to allow for the operation of the rental of rooms at 7649 Cypress Drive. The rental of rooms SUP will allow for the short-term rental of one-bedroom within the existing three-bedroom residence. The property is Zoned A1 General Agricultural Designated Rural Lands on a comprehensive plan and is located outside the primary service area as all our surrounding parcels. Staff considered the home's location, parking provisions, and that the owner will reside on-site during the time of the rentals to be favorable factors in the evaluation of this application. The property has an existing driveway and parking area sufficient to accommodate guests. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include limitations on the number of rooms rented and the total number of rental occupants per stay. Staff notes that there was a previously approved special use permit which expired due to a condition not being met within the required timeframe. While staff believes that the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that the proposal is not fully consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff cannot recommend approval. Should the Planning Commission wish to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Are there any Commissioner questions for Ms. Costello? So we do have a speaker card for this. Sharon Elliott, who I believe is the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name's Sharon Elliott. I reside at 7649 Cypress Drive in Lenexa. I'm the applicant for a special use permit to operate a short-term rental space in my home where I reside. This will not take away from affordable housing, as I only rent when I'm on the premises, and I would never feel comfortable renting long-term when I'm away. Ms. Costello already went over what was consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plans, so I'll skip that. In July 2023, I appeared before you and then before the Board of Supervisors, who graciously approved my request for an SUP for short-term rental. I successfully rented the space with no issues, and I have updated letters of support from my neighbors. After obtaining the SUP, I knew that I had to obtain a business license, which I promptly did. I was also advised that I needed a CO. I didn't understand the abbreviation, but when I found out it meant a certificate of occupancy, I thought all was good since we were issued a CO when we built our house 15 years ago. I didn't realize that what I needed was an updated certificate of occupancy. This was a misunderstanding on my part, not a malicious attempt to circumvent the system. As soon as I realized my mistake, I applied for the updated certificate of occupancy on BLDR dash 24 dash 1135, but work was stopped on it when they realized that my SUP had been voided. I tried to obtain an extension on my SUP, but was told that an extension was impossible, and I would need to start all over and apply for a new SUP. So here I am. Any questions?
Questions? Applicant?
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have any speaker cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Oh, okay. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing for that item. Discussion, any discussion from Commissioners on this item?
I plan to support it and would be willing to make a motion unless others have things they need to talk about.
Well, I have a couple of comments. I am not going to support this. Two reasons. First is, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan as noted here. It's interior. It's not on a major arterial road. Second thing is, I'm very, I've been always concerned about home. We now have two types of home businesses. One where, like, I know a couple of folks, I know a gentleman who does financial, teaching financial planning for small colleges, and he has a business license, or he did. He passed away. But he had a business license. He never had any of his people come to his house. He would go to them or do it on Zoom. My wife has a business license, does academic coaching, and nobody comes to our house, and it's all done by Zoom, whether it be in New Zealand, down the street, in college, or in California, wherever. The thing that troubles me about this in a residential neighborhood is that we have a parking requirement. And when you have a parking requirement, it seems to me it's not, it's not a home business. And it's, I mean, it's a home business, but it's more a commercial. And I don't think those type of businesses should be in residential neighborhoods. And with a special use permit, when this house at some point will be sold, and while we have favorable comments from the neighbors, a new owner may not be as, let's say, may not be as good a neighbor as the applicant is. And that will create a problem in the future because the SUP goes to the land. And so that's, I guess it was three reasons. That's why I will not support this.
Any other?
I may be wrong, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Is for the short-term rentals, the Airbnb, I think we have the same kind of a road issue, too. But we also have it in rural lands for it, which is where this is. And so, you know, I understand that what it is for the long-term rentals, but I also know for the short-term rentals, we've permitted in the past. I approved this, or not approved, I supported this when it first came to us, and I intend to support it again. I think it's a good use of a I think it's a good use of a home, and we wish you all the best of luck with this pass.
Discussion, or do I?
Just have a short comment, if you would just have a brief comment. So I share some of my colleagues' views on the short-term rentals. One thing I kind of struggle with is if it doesn't, you know, it's a slippery slope when you start approving things that don't, you know, kind of go along with like the comprehensive plan. It's a slippery slope. So I think I was, first, first I was not going to support this. The more that I've thought about it, I'm leaning towards supporting it now. But I do, you know, kind of caution the group on, you know, approving these things. It's kind of a slippery slope when it doesn't meet requirements, and it gets very gray.
I think you make a good point, Steve. And I think when we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at it as an aspiration, and it's what we want it to be for. It's up to the zoning piece to become effective. And so we do have some structure around that. And so what we have is guidance. And guidance, as you well know, is really on a case-by-case, based on what we see here. And so I think it's up to all of us to look at the context of what's being proposed within the notion of the comprehensive and what the zoning ordinances tell us, and then make a best judgment. And that's where I came down on this thing for it, is after taking a look at everything within the context of it, I was supportive of it to begin with, and I'm still supportive of it.
Have a motion, Mr. Rogers?
Will. But also, but also, we really talked about this case the first time around, and so did the Board of Supervisors, and really nothing, nothing really has changed. I mean, I feel like, I feel like that ship sailed. And so, not that we can't introduce new factors, but I don't believe there are new factors with this case. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that we, the Commission, vote to recommend the special use permit 24-0034-7649 Cypress Drive Rental of Rooms be approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Istenis, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Everson?
Oh.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Dr. Haskins?
Aye.
Dr. Allman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to the next agenda item, SUP-25-0001, Christ Church Fellowship, or sorry, Christ Fellowship Church of Williamsburg. Mr. Alveston, you have the floor.
Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission, Mr. Terry Lackey has applied for a special use permit on behalf of Christ Fellowship Church of Williamsburg to allow the operation of a place of public assembly and expand the existing development on the site by adding two storage sheds and a playground area at 3687 Ironbound Road and 3695 Ironbound Road. The properties are approximately 4.77 acres in size, zoned R8 Rural Residential with proffers and PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, designated low-density residential on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, and located inside the primary service area. The master plan shows the existing site development with the proposed site improvements. The existing site is developed with two main structures, a parking area and a stormwater management facility. The proposed site improvements solely consist of the addition of two eight-feet-by-twelve-and-a-half-feet storage sheds and a 50-feet-by-50-feet playground area. Should this SUP be approved, any future development on that site is not, that is not generally consistent with the master plan would require a master plan amendment to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Mr. Alveston, are there any Commissioner questions for staff? Thank you very much. Are there any Commissioner disclosures on this item? All right, in that case, I will open the public comment, and we do have some speaker cards. Thank you, Ms. Istenis. And our first speaker is Scott Dobson, who is, I believe, the applicant.
Evening. I'm Scott Dobson with Christ Fellowship Church. Mr. Lackey, the applicant, is with me here in the audience, and we really don't have any further statements to make or presentations at this time. We're here just to support any questions that you have on this project.
Sorry, could you please state your name and address for the record as well?
Sure. Scott Dobson, 209 Clifton's Bluff, Williamsburg.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Any questions for the applicant?
I got one, real quick one. I drive by there all the time, and as a matter of fact, I started voting in that church when it was before. It looks like you're putting a rain garden up front there with all the blue flags. Is that what you're doing there?
We have, yeah, we actually got a grant from, from the Commonwealth for planting. Yes, we did, for planting native Virginia plants in this area. It's going to help with the stormwater.
Stormwater erosion.
Yeah, exactly.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
That's great. Thank you. And just a reminder for our next speakers as well, please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes, and please also state your full name and address when you come up to speak. So our next speaker on this item is Terry Lackey.
Good evening. My name is Terry Lackey. My address is 8323 Barron's Court, Williamsburg 23188, in the Long Hill Gate section of Long Hill Road. I have no further additions. I'm here to answer your questions. We chose Scott as our presenter because he's an engineer. He's much smarter than the rest of us. He builds submarines down at the shipyard. And I'd like to thank Will for his diligence in helping us through this.
Questions for us? Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Robert Smith. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And the last speaker card that I have is S. Adu Diggs.
Good evening. My name's Aiden Diggs. I reside at 3701 and 3707 Ironbound Road. I'm their neighbor. So thank you for this opportunity to speak, Madam Vice Chairman and members of the Board. I've resided along Ironbound Road for 40 years. I approve of this current master plan. They would like to get approved, and they've been good stewards of the property, as you've noted, and enjoy seeing the kids out there playing football and what have you. Since I've lived here, there's been three different owners of that property, and my main concern is about the future, different owners and different leadership maybe in the church. And I'm requesting the approval with one restrictor, restriction. We, my wife and I, Jean Marie, we don't want to see the parking lot expanded. I don't, not big on, I don't care if they park on the grass or what have you, but I don't want to see a paved parking lot next to my place. We feel it will ruin the character of our neighborhood and also devalue the property. And I did speak to the, your planner here before, but he said the time was short to do anything about it. The best thing to do was come up here and speak. While it's not part of the current plan, it, the property is being rezoned, and that's why I just want to nip this in the butt before it becomes a future issue. I'm joining my new neighbor, and I've spoken to him about this, and I just want to say, I'll help them, I have helped them in the past year, over the last couple of weeks, anything they need, and will help them in the future. Thanks for your time and your consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Those are all the speaker cards that we have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue who did not submit a speaker card? In that case, I will close the public hearing and open for Commissioner discussion.
I have one question for staff for clarification. It is, if this is an approved master plan, and the parking lot is the way it is right now, if in fact the church came back in for an additional parking lot, which is not shown on this master plan, they'd have to go through the SUP. Am I correct about that?
So it would be an amendment of the master plan, which is approved with this SUP? The zoning ordinance gives the planning director that authority to make interpretations and judgments on whether or not a proposed development is consistent or not with an approved master plan. So if it was deemed by the planning director to be not consistent, then they would have to come back, yes, sir? And that would go to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Of approval?
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We will do a roll call vote for this. Ms. Istenis?
Mr. Polster?
Does the motion include the conditions?
Well, that wasn't. The conditions included already in the application, yeah.
We just stated. He said motion approved.
Yeah, motion approved with the conditions as listed on the other page.
May I help you out? Motion approved, special use permit 25-0001, Christ Fellowship Church of Williamsburg, with conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions. Ms. Istenis, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Everson?
Aye.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Dr. Haskins?
Aye.
Dr. Allman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Z-24-0012, SUP-24-0023, Chickahominy Haven Marina Rezoning and Special Use Permit, R1 to A1. We'll start with the staff presentation. Ms. Suloff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Mr. Jason Grimes of AES Consulting Engineers has applied on behalf of Sincere Estates LLC to rezone the site of the Chickahominy Haven Marina from R2 to A1 with proffers. Along with the rezoning, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for the legal operation of the existing marina and existing and proposed accessory uses, including a restaurant, boat storage, boat trailer parking, a general store, wet slips, docks, and piers. The subject property is located outside the primary service area. It's Zoned R2 General Residential and is designated Rural Lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. This lot is shown on the 1965 master plan for the Chickahominy Haven subdivision, informally known as the Haven, as a commercial lot. However, that plot predates our zoning ordinance. Thus, when the site did receive a zoning designation of R2 along with the rest of the Haven, it had been operating as a commercial marina for several years at that point. Boating facilities associated with HOAs are permitted uses in the R2 district. However, this marina is owned and operated privately, and therefore does not fit under that permission. It's operated as a legal nonconformity for much of its existence. Many uses on the site, including the general store, restaurant, wet slip rentals, and others, have lost their legally nonconforming status as they've ceased operation for a period of over two years. The new owners of the marina wish to reestablish those uses. However, as they've lost their legal status, reestablishing the uses is not permitted in the current zoning district. Additionally, renovations to structures related to uses that have maintained their legally nonconforming status are limited by provisions of the zoning ordinance so as to avoid the expansion of nonconforming uses. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to the A1 district, which permits marinas and their accessory uses by SUP. The zoning aligns with some adjacent and nearby properties. The applicant has proffered to exclude in perpetuity all other uses permitted in the A1 district, aside from the marina and its accessory uses. Staff has also proposed SUP conditions, which would mitigate impacts of the use and which provide an opportunity to address existing issues on the site, such as parking nonconformities and unaddressed stormwater runoff, which would otherwise persist. With the attached conditions and draft proffers, staff finds that the proposal is compatible with surrounding zoning and development and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning and SUP applications to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the attached proffers and conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is with us as well.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner questions for staff? Thank you. Are there any disclosures from the Planning Commission for this item? All right, in that case, I will open the public comment. Do we have, yes, we do, speaker cards for this item? Thank you. All right, so our first speaker card is for James Cumming, who is the applicant.
How's it doing? I'm James Cumming. I'm at 100 Lakeview in Topeka, Virginia. So I'm one of the operating owners of Midway Marina, which is on the property right now. And honestly, the short version of what we're looking for is just to bring it back to where it used to be. It was a restaurant in the past. It was a big part of the community. It was a general store in the past. It had a lot of these different uses, and kids went down there and got ice cream, they did all these different things. And since we've taken over in July of last year, we've had nothing but support from the neighborhood. We have three board members here of the association here supporting it. We have a ton of people coming down telling us about the first prom date was at that restaurant and how they did this and they did that. I mean, it's just, it's been, it's been really, really cool to see. Since then, we've been able to do repairs and do different things, but we're constantly watching the shoreline come away a little bit, and we want to fix some of that stuff. We're constantly seeing the docks that we'd like to make sure they get up to full repairs versus just repairing the little areas we're able to repair. So what we're trying to get is get it rezoned so we can make it back to where it was, get it back, doing what it should be doing and being something for the community that it can be. You know, the restaurant in general is, the whole neighborhood's in full support of it. They used to go down there and eat dinner and not have to leave their neighborhood, but on their golf cart. So that's what we're ultimately trying to accomplish. So any questions for me?
Thank you very much. The next speaker card I have is Stephen Barone.
My name is Stephen Barone. I reside at 7464 Little Creek Dam Road. I'm the owner of Sincere Estates and also co-owner of Midway Marina. Just to continue what Jay also mentioned is, this thing has been operational since 1965. I mean, it's always been there. The structure's always been there. We're just, you know, trying to bring it back to the community and, you know, give a place the community can be proud of again. So any questions? Thank you.
All right, and the last speaker card that I have is Logan Hall.
Good evening. My name is Logan Hall. I reside at 1102 Hitchens Lane, Williamsburg 23188. I just wanted to make a brief statement in support of the marina project, more specifically the applicant. I've known Mr. Barone for about seven years, first as a professional colleague, but has since become a great friend. And then in that time, I found him to be a gentleman of incredible integrity and professionalism. As a previous client of his, I can't speak highly enough of the work ethic, attention to detail, and commitment to doing things the right way, all of which he will bring to this project. I have no doubt that if approved, this will be a great success for Mr. Barone, the county, and the community. He has my full and unwavering support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak who did not submit a speaker card on this item? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open for Commissioner discussion.
Unfortunately, Mr. Hallman is not with us this evening, but he did take advantage of going out and taking a look on a rainy Monday afternoon for that. And I asked, I couldn't make it with him, but anyhow, we talked afterwards, and he was rather impressed with your plans for it. But he also was very supportive of what they're trying to do, especially with the bulwarks and trying to repair. I think they're going to end up putting some floating docks in there for. This project does something for more than just the community, but for something called ecotourism for the county. And there are a lot of people trying to access the lower Chickahominy and all the way up to Lenexa, and trying to get a place where you can get into the water is almost impossible. I've gone up to the Lenexa one marina for, I don't know how many years, for looking at the King Tide for the high level. And I'm always amazed at the number of people, the family pieces that are there. And I think you guys are awfully brave in this economy to try this again, to try to bring this out and to be part of the community. The one concern I had was, and it's true for all of Chickahominy Haven, is when we look down towards the next 15 to 20 years of sea level rise. The good news is that the one and a half sea level rise doesn't touch you guys, and the improvements that you're going to make is going to make it better. I mean, the bad news is if we get a hurricane, you guys are in a flood zone. I mean, the bad news is if we get a hurricane, you guys are in a flood zone for it. But I'm sure with the different repairs that you're going to make and the things that you're going to do, it'll be a successful business and in addition to the community as well as to the county. And I am supportive of it.
Comment. When I was teaching at Toowoomba, I met a lot of parents at Woody's. And it was a huge place, like you said, the talk of the town. I mean, I have memories, and I'm from what we call East Williamsburg. So I'm really excited about this for you all.
I too would be in full support of this. I think it's a, it's a great revitalization for the community and for the county.
I have a question. I, I think I'm out of order in the way we presented things, but I, I probably should have asked while one of the owners was up front. But I did get approached by, to the folks that live on South Riverside Drive, who were very interested in, they're supportive but worried about bands and music at night. And I don't know if that's a piece of this or not. I mean, the rest, the restaurant's like a discreet piece of the marina, right? But does the county or staff go through things like noise ordinances and pieces of that?
I'll let the applicant speak to any ideas they have about special events. We did talk about a green space on there as a gathering space. Ultimately, that side, it's kind of at the northeast corner, right in the corner, was left as just a green open space for people to pull up, picnicking, you know, pulling up on their boats and viewing the river. Any special events would have to go through the special event permit process, which is housing community development. The noise ordinance, of course, is in effect here. And we did add a condition about lighting and speakers, trying to mitigate anything like that. But as far as allowing a public gathering space, that's not considered, like a dedicated event space, that's not considered an accessory used to an marina, and any special events would have to go through the permitting process and obey the code about noise and everything like that.
That's really helpful.
Okay.
Their concern was that they sit on their docks and they worry about music at 1:00 in the morning, or 3:00 in the morning, or however late...
I'll let the applicant know any other plans.
If they're watching, they're not here. Told them to come.
Would the applicant like to come back up to address?
On that, for us, you know, in the Haven, they do different gathering, they do different things like that. But for us, we're going to keep it completely family oriented, right? So for us, noise ordinances and all those different things, if there was people gathering all those things, we would kind of manage the property so, you know, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, this thing is not continuing to go on, right? Or if someone's there gathering or having music in their vehicles or any of those different things, if it's, if it's creating an issue for the neighborhood, that's something we'll be managing on property.
Further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommended the board the approval of JCC Z-24-0012 and SUP-24-0023 Chickahominy Haven Marina, with conditions.
With conditions, excellent. Ms. Istanis, please call the roll.
Mr. Polster.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Everson.
Aye.
Mr. May.
Aye.
Dr. Haskins.
Aye.
Dr. Allman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, our next agenda item is SUP-24-0032, 232 Lakeview Drive. We will start with the staff presentation. Mr. Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening and thank you again, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission deferred this SUP application to its meeting on April 2nd, 2025, to allow time for the applicant to have the 100 feet resource protection area, or RPA, to be delineated. Since then, the applicant has contract, contacted, contracted, I'm sorry, STENTAC to have the RPA area delineated. STENTAC evaluated the results of the recent delineation of onsite features and with, when within 100 feet of the project area, to determine the extent of the RPA buffer area associated with the Little Creek Reservoir. Based on the delineation, the storage area appears to be located outside the 100 feet RPA area. As such, there is no need to have this project further evaluated by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, as the RPA does not appear to be impacted by this proposal. Please refer to Attachment Number 6 for the RPA delineation full report. As you may recall from February staff presentation, the applicant, Mr. James Beaver of Williamsburg Contracting LLC, has applied for a special use permit to allow for a contractor's office and storage of vehicle and equipment on his property located at 232 Lakeview Drive. The property is on A1, General Agricultural, and designated by the comprehensive plan as rural lands and community character conservation, open space, or recreation. A contractor's office and warehouse and storage requires a special use permit on A1 zone districts. Mr. Beaver currently operates this business without the required SUP. However, if approved, this SUP application submitted by Mr. Beavers will bring the land use of this property in compliance with current zoning regulations. All reviewing agencies have reviewed and evaluated this application. The site is designated rural lands and community character conservation, open space, or recreation on the comprehensive plan land use map. So with rural land, rural lands designation, appropriate primary uses in rural land include activities such as traditional agricultural, forest activities, and farming. However, appropriately scaled and located direct agricultural or forest support uses, including agribusiness and ecotourism, home-based occupations, or certain uses which require very low intensity settings relative to the site in which you'll be located, may be considered in a case-by-case review. While it's not an agricultural or forest use, staff finds the proposed CAO of the business to be a very low intensity operation, which would not negatively impact the nature and rural character of the area. The comprehensive plan designation, community character conservation, open space, or recreation, per the comprehensive plan, land uses that are most appropriate for this designation are those that currently contribute to the rural, historic, and scenic character of James City County. Other properties that are appropriate for this designation are those that provide buffers to historic sites and environmentally sensitive areas, such as reservoirs, natural heritage resources, education resources, and areas for recreation and enjoyment. For this particular property, the community character conservation, open space, or recreation designation function as a protection to further protect sensitive environmental areas such as the Little Creek Reservoir. Currently, the entirety of the commercial operation associated with this SUP application is located within the conservation, open space designation. Although the current use is, of the area is not consistent with the intent of this complaint designation, the use has already been established in this area since 2019. Further, SUP conditions such as condition, such as condition number four, which prohibits parking, storage of equipment, indoor vehicles, indoor additional soil disturbance within 15 feet of the RPA buffer area, and condition number 11, which limits the number of vehicles associated with the project that can be parked on the site, ensures that the area subjected to this SUP will not expand further into the conservation and recreational area. Proposal condition number 12, further prohibits, further development within this comprehensive plan designation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed SUP conditions. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that we have. The applicant is also in attendance and happy to answer any questions that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner questions for staff yet?
Mr. Rivera, could you bring up the modified diagram that I had when I asked for the additional 15 feet from the buffer? Could you bring that up?
That should be...
Yeah, that's it on there. But I thought it was the, you modified the other one, the, the other diagram. There's another one.
This was the only one that I modified that showed the 15 feet line.
My, my point is, is that it, the additional condition that they put in there from the RPA buffer clearly takes, takes it away from the drainage and the asphalt. And one of the other things that isn't a condition in there, but the applicant in the conversation with the stormwater folks, said if he does have any equipment that would leak oil or whatever, they would put a pan with an absorbent thing underneath it. And the parking area, as you well know, is almost another 20, 30 feet back from that line there. And so that was very helpful, Mr. Rivera, to understand exactly how that was going to look. Thank you.
Absolutely.
If I could follow up on that, the spill prevention, it's not actually in the SUP. Is that going to be enforceable?
Spill prevention is in the plan. This additional piece is what they talked about, that, that when he has a parked vehicle, I don't...
Right.
Right? You would end up putting a pan underneath it with an absorbent...
I missed it.
Just as another plus, which I thought was very thoughtful of the owner to be able to suggest that and do that.
I did too.
Other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we do have a speaker card. Thank you, Ms. Istanis. Our speaker is the applicant, Aaron Beavers and Amanda Beavers. Sorry, I need to open the public comment. Let me do that. The public comment is open.
Having us, I'm Amanda Beavers. This is Aaron Beavers. We're the owners of Williamsburg Contracting. Thank you, Jose, for everything he's given us. I just wanted to say that the spill pans are already in use. Most of what we keep there are trailers, and we do apologize that it's already in use. Given that it was agricultural, we thought trailers were not a no-no, so we do apologize. When that was brought to us, we immediately started the process of the SUP. I just wanted to say that we don't do any work onsite there. It's literally just the trailers. There is a dump truck that's there. Any work that's done is offsite. We keep that there because it's the most secure location, being right under our noses in our house. We are so invested in that land. Our children live there. We would never, we have a well. We will not do anything that's going to compromise that land because it will ultimately affect us as well. As you can see, we are off of the RPA, and we plan, we're, you know, there's no plans to ever expand. We really just needed the onsite storage so that he can conduct his business elsewhere.
And when we say the onsite, onsite storage, we're talking when, all of, all of my work is done onsite, work from Richmond to Elizabethan and everywhere in between. Trailers that I have, I mean, the dump truck typically stays there unless it's out on a job, but it comes back. Our trailers are in and out sporadically, you know? Most of the time, our equipment and our trailers and stuff are on job sites making money. If they're not on job sites making money, we're losing money, you know?
You know, we have three months.
Yeah, sorry.
We have no deliveries, no traffic, no employees. It's us and our children.
I, I'm the sole person that works there, so we don't have any, any additional traffic or anything. And, and the catch pans have been in use for a while, so...
Any questions for the applicants? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who did not submit a speaker card who would like to speak on this topic? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and open for Commissioner discussion.
I'll just make a comment that this, this is not a cheap process to go through, and I really do appreciate you guys coming back with the definition of where the RPA is and getting a STENTAC report that was a mile long on that. Yeah, exactly, as well as the pictures that you sent along with that for that gravel area was very helpful to me, as well as what you'd put before. And I can understand why you wouldn't want to put this anywhere other place on your property because it really is a beautiful, beautiful place. And so I, I am very supportive of this for it.
Further discussion or a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Allow me. I'd like to make a motion that the Commission recommend the Board of Supervisors approve special use permit 24-0032, 232 Lakeview Drive Contractor's Office Equipment Storage Yard.
With conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions. Ms. Istanis, please call the roll.
Mr. Polster.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Everson.
Aye.
Mr. May.
Aye.
Dr. Haskins.
Aye.
Dr. Allman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Z-24-0014 and MP-25-0001, Fort Magruder Mixed Use Rezoning. We'll start with the staff presentation. Ms. Jakura, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Good evening. As indicated, this is rezoning 2414 and Master Plan 251 for the Fort Magruder property, which is a hotel with conference space at 6945, 6927, and 6951 Pocahontas Trail. For orientation purposes, this is, ooh, mouse, there we go. This is Route 60, Pocahontas Trail. These are the subject properties outlined in red, which together make up the Fort Magruder Hotel. This is the jurisdictional boundary with the city of Williamsburg, so this is the Corder Path Recreation Facility and some whole houses, condos there. The proposed rezoning and master plan would be to convert the existing hotel and conference space to 126 apartments and also 32,000 square feet of commercial space. They are proposing to rezone it to the mixed-use zoning district, which is why it's a mix of uses. Forty percent of those residential units would be affordable and workforce housing, which is proffered by the applicants. Additionally, the existing landscapes along the front, side, and rear, which are required to be there per ordinance within the mixed-use district, are to be retained and enhanced. They will identify existing vegetation that needs to be removed and implant enhanced landscaping in its place. They will also be bringing the parking lot into conformance with current requirements. So the lack of landscape islands within the parking lot will be rectified. They will be installing those. They will also be fixing the ADA accessible parking spaces to have the required access aisles. So all of the existing parking lots will be brought into conformance. Further, the stormwater facilities will be brought into conformance with respect to quantity and quality. They'll be addressing the details of that if this is approved during the site plan stage. The total impervious surface for this property is 75, approximately 75%. With the proposed improvements like the landscape islands, they're reducing the total impervious surface of this property down to about 70%. And the existing indoor and outdoor pools are being proffered to remain as recreational amenities, in addition to the 1.1 acre open space that is there, which is actually the site of a Civil War-era redoubt. They're also proffering to provide a fitness room, a movie room, and a gathering space as amenities, additional amenities. Here, I've taken the proposed master plan and added some highlighting to help draw your attention to those different components that I just walked through. This yellowish color is where those 126 apartment units will be located within, again, the existing building. This red area of the existing building would be where that 32,000 square feet of commercial space would be located. And then two pools, which currently exist, are here in blue, the indoor and the outdoor. That open space area, which does have a Civil War-era earthworks existing onsite, is here in the center. And then the front landscaping requirement is required by the ordinance to be an average of 30 feet in depth. They are expanding slightly this center area in order to bring that into conformance. And again, would be enhancing it, removing existing vegetation, which is deemed to be deficient, and planting improvements. Also note that they're removing, you may be familiar with the stockade wall and fencing, as well as the canyons with, cannons, excuse me, within that front, they would, are proposing to remove those items within the buffer. The side and rear buffers, they're proposing to retain those. The ordinance requires 30-foot depth buffers, but does provide a provision for the planning director to grant a request to reduce those upon review and with... Upon review, um, and with suitable conditions, the director preliminarily determined that that would be in line with the ordinance if this were to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. The conditions for that would be that they still, um, plant the same quantity of vegetation that would otherwise be required in the full buffer area, and also, like I've noted, removing that vegetation, which is deficient, and planting enhanced landscaping. The applicants provided a proposed rendering of the front. They have indicated that the existing architecture will remain as is with some minor improvements. There is a currently an existing canopy at the front of this area with a roundabout. They've indicated that it is too low, so they are proposing to remove that and provide additional parking within that area. This is the land use map, so turning to policy review of this project. The property is still here in the center, uh, outlined in red. All of the property in, within James City County, um, that's on this side of Pocahontas Trail, is designated under the land use map for mixed use, so this proposal does align with that. Again, just orientation, this is not colored in because it's within the city of Williamsburg, so it's outside of our jurisdiction. And this proposal does align with the twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan. There are a number of housing and other objectives noted within the staff report that this proposal does align with. They are proposing to meet the codes and ordinances as I described. Um, there are a number of constraints due to the existing layout and, uh, conformance that they have achieved. It passes most of the adopted policies. The one here I'm noting is that parks and recreation facilities, which it does not achieve, um, but staff does note that there are a couple constraints with respect to how those guidelines are, um, written, and also this particular property, specifically that Civil War, Civil War-era redoubt, which constrains their ability to do stuff in that open space, such as putting a playground. Also, it's an existing development, they are very much, the building is already built, uh, so there are not that many options for what they could do. And they are also proposing and proffering amenities above and beyond what would be required, for instance, the two pools, the movie room, the fitness. Yeah. With that, staff is recommending approval of rezoning twenty-four fourteen with proffered conditions and master plan twenty-five one. I'm available for any questions. The applicants are here and also have a presentation.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you very much, Ms. Jakura. Um, are there any disclosures on this item from the planning commission?
Yes, I talked with, uh, Mr. Getty about this, uh, issue on the phone.
All right. In that case, I will open the public comment, and we do have a couple speaker cards. Um, our first speaker is a representative of the applicant, uh, Mr. Getty, Vernon Getty.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Vernon Getty of eleven-seventy-seven Jamestown Road. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight, uh, representing the applicant, in this case, Conserve Holdings LLC. Uh, also here with me is Jason Grimes with AES Consulting Engineers. See a couple other folks who've been instrumental in the, um, in this project so far, too, the architects. It's actually Walter Park's architects, my apologies to them, and Garove Slade, who did the traffic study. Uh, Conserve Holdings is a real estate investment company that focuses on multifamily properties primarily in Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. Uh, they're based in Tom's River, New Jersey, and are led by David Walken and Steve Fuchs, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. Uh, they're an experienced owner-operator of multifamily property here in James City, and in fact, own the adjacent Grand Village at Williamsburg Project, right next door to this. Uh, the Fort Magruder Inn, it was built in nineteen-seventy-six, and for many years was a thriving hotel conference center. Uh, unfortunately, for a number of years now, the property has struggled and has been severely underutilized. Uh, the property's been for sale, I think, for several years and is under contract to Conserve Holdings. So you've seen the, um, Allison has gone over the surrounding, um, development. Um, these are just a few pictures. You've probably all driven by it many times, but this is the entrance closest to the city, and you're looking at the conference center area, what will be the commercial area of the project, and you can see the stockade walls. Uh, this is another view of it. Uh, this is the second entrance heading out toward Bush Gardens, and you can see the multi-story hotel part of the project here, and again, the stockades. This is looking into the site, heading east. Um, this is actually taken from inside, you're, I, I took these standing on the access road, and, um, I think a couple things, you'll notice there's some very nice mature trees and landscaping in the project that, uh, to, if possible, will be retained. Uh, the other thing you note is in that entire parking lot, there are two cars, one of which was mine, and driving around the backside of the building, there were two other cars, so, um, it, it is very much in the spring break week, an underutilized property. Um, as Allison has said, Conserve proposes to rezone the property from B-one to mixed use with proffers to allow it to be converted to a hundred and twenty-six residential apartments and thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial space. Uh, it's the adaptive reuse of an aging and underutilized property through what will be a multimillion-dollar renovation, um, with the goal of providing quality, affordable workforce, and market-rate housing in commercial space, uh, to benefit the county and the community at large. The fact that it is a renovation and redevelopment, adaptive reuse of an existing property, rather than a greenfield, um, development, is one of the great benefits of the project, but it also created a number of challenges under the zoning ordinance, and our appreciation to Susan and Allison and the planning staff for working, uh, with the applicant through the process to find ways to make this work. Um, it was a collaborative effort, we appreciate it. Allison has reviewed the site with you. I'll note here, there are existing, um, deteriorated tennis courts, which are being removed to provide parking, and, um, as she mentioned, parking lots will be improved. This is the indoor pool, the outdoor pool is here, and this is the park where normally we would have put a playground, but with the Civil War redoubt, uh, doesn't look like that's going to be possible. And clearly, looking at the site, there's no place for a multi-use playing field, so, um, other amenities have been proffered that I think will be very useful. This just gives you an idea of, it's a busy slide, but the black lines show the existing hotel rooms, and the colors show how they're being combined into the, um, different size apartment units. Uh, this is the first floor and then upper floors. Again, it's a multimillion-dollar investment in the redevelopment of an aging and underutilized property. Um, it's consistent with the mixed-use designation in the comprehensive plan, and Allison did a very good job in, um, spelling out how it complies with the relevant goals, strategy, and actions of the plan. Uh, forty percent of the residential units are proffered as workforce, affordable housing. There is a phasing proffer to ensure the commercial space is provided, and, um, in practical terms, the building will be renovated all at once, so that space will be ready for leasing at the same time residential units are available. Uh, it has a positive fiscal impact, it passes adequate public schools facility test, transportation facilities test, and there is a proffer of an updated traffic study. If any of the commercial uses that actually go there are more intense than the assumptions in the traffic study, an updated study would be done to see if any improvements are necessary. There, there are none, um, projected to be necessary. Uh, and we're providing suitable amenities. We've been through that with pool, park, and other things. Glad to try to answer any questions you have of us, and would respectfully ask you to recommend approval to the board. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant, representative of the, of the applicant?
I have a question. So I, I'm hearing the terms market rate, affordable workforce housing. Forty percent of it being affordable workhouse, I mean, I'm sorry, affordable workforce. Can you tell me the distinction between market rate and affordable, and the sixty, what happens with the sixty percent?
Sure. Uh, the sixty percent that's not restricted by proffer is, is going to be market rate, whatever they determine the market is for that type of unit. Um, the forty percent, um, would follow the old HOP policy with the percentages, certain percentage offered to folks at sixty percent of adjusted median income in the area, some at eighty and some at a hundred and twenty, um, which gives you a range of, uh, potential rentals, and then the, the range for each of those varies depending on the family size of the folks moving in.
Questions?
I'm still trying to understand and get an idea of the sixteen, eighty, and one hundred and twenty percent AMI, uh, and understanding how the units are broken out in terms of, um, uh, thirty-one units, or twenty-one units are going to be the sixty percent AMI. I, I'm trying to get an idea of a one person as opposed to two or three. I knew you'd be prepared to answer this.
I should have brought it up with you. And I will say, uh, thanks to Kristi Parrish, this is hot off the presses with the most recent, um, AMI information that just came out within the last day or two. So, at sixty percent, for one individual, the maximum rental rate would be one thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, two individuals, it's one thousand two seventy-eight, three, one thousand four thirty-eight fifty, and for a four, it's, uh, one thousand five ninety-seven fifty.
And for the eighty percent, there are, uh, eighteen units, one?
I think that's correct.
No, eighty percent AMI.
At eighty percent, the ranges are from one individual, it's fourteen hundred ninety-two, goes up to seventeen oh four for two, nineteen eighteen for three, and twenty-one thirty, uh, per month for, um, four.
And the last, uh, one was thirteen units at a hundred and twenty percent?
Correct. And that range starts at two thousand two hundred thirty-six fifty, two thousand five hundred fifty-six, twenty-eight hundred seventy-five, and thirty-one ninety-five.
Now, the, the other follow-on question with that was when the Development Review Committee, uh, sat in and listened to the conceptual plan for this thing, and, and that one busy chart that you had of red, yellow, and green, uh, actually earmarked one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom.
Right.
And, and so I was trying to figure out, either by floor space or by number of bedrooms, whether or not a sixty percent of the AMI would have access to the two- or three-bedroom home or not.
Yeah, we, I, that question was put to the applicant, and Allison, you may have the exact response, but, um, I think it was roughly, it, not quite a third, a third, a third, but it was not far off that.
Third, a third, meaning?
At each.
Unit size.
Size available in each category. Forty, forty, twenty, if I stand corrected.
Okay. And, and, and of course, the reason that I'm, I'm asking these questions is, is we all get confused about what workforce housing means and what the cost of it is, and, you know, as we've talked about this before, the average median income, and Kristi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is a hundred and one thousand dollars as of twenty-five? Okay, a hundred and six thousand. So, so if, if I'm a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI, that means that I'm making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I'm going to get a break. Of course, the, the rate that he's paying is two thousand dollars, GP, for, but I was just trying to get an idea of this, and, and my benchmark for this is the, uh, Marston's, uh, Affordable Housing Project, the two rivers out there, and I was trying to look at the pricing of that in terms of, they have controlled rates of the six, thirty, sixty, and eighty percent, and frankly, I didn't see it too much out, far off from what you've quoted on that. So it, it was kind of an idea of what does that really mean? I, I guess the, uh, we'll leave this for another conversation, but thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I do have another speaker card on this item, um, Allison Woodard.
Good evening, um, Allison Woodard. I reside at eleven Heath Place in Newport News, Virginia, and I'm here representing the Williamsburg Battlefield Association. Uh, we are a nonprofit whose mission is to still, tell the stories of Civil War Williamsburg and to advocate for the preservation of the Williamsburg Civil War battlefield. Uh, we have no particular position for or against the rezoning or the adaptive reuse of the Fort Magruder Hotel and Conference Center. Um, our concern specifically is for the preservation and protection of the Civil War redoubt in the courtyard behind the hotel, which you have addressed. Thank you. Um, we do, we have looked at the master plan, and we do see that it is the historical and archaeological significance of that redoubt is noted on the plan, and that don't, don't appear to be any plans to demolish or to use that space for any of other purposes. Um, we just sincerely hope that, uh, your commission, um, your historical commission and your supervisors will continue to, uh, support and encourage the preservation and protection of that redoubt throughout the project as it progresses. Um, it is one of fourteen redouts that was built across the peninsula, uh, beginning in the spring of eighteen sixty-one to protect against a Union Army coming up the peninsula to Richmond, which was the Confederate capital at the time. Um, that did happen in the spring of eighteen sixty-two, and there was a battle fought here on May fifth. Um, only half of those original fourteen redouts still survive today in whole or in part, and, uh, this, uh, particular redoubt, which is known as Redout Number Three, is, um, the only one that survives at the center of the battlefield where the primary fighting took place, other than a very small portion of what is known as Redout Six, which is more commonly known as the actual historical Fort Magruder over on Penniman Road. Um, Redout Three was heavily engaged during the battle on May fifth and has a unique local connection. Um, during the battle, the artillery battery, uh, in it was actually manned by men from James City County and Williamsburg. Their captain was William Garrett. He was born, raised, and lived in Williamsburg, um, or educated in Williamsburg, and he lived in what is today known as the Coke Garrett House, and that is currently the home of the CEO and president of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. And so, we're going to continue to, uh, follow this project as it progresses, uh, but we would be happy to share any additional historical information you might be interested in, or to discuss other possible ways to continue to preserve and protect, uh, the redoubt. Thank you very much.
All right, are there any other speakers who did not submit speaker cards who would like to speak on this item? All right, it's, oh, yes, please come up. Please state your full name and address as well.
On the Smith, three oh one Lewis Burwell Place, right behind the hotel. Uh, my major concern right now is the commercial space. I've seen other properties, but they didn't have commercial space there, and so that space would be adjacent to some of our townhouses right behind there in Williamsburg in the city. So I just want to know if there's any clarification about that commercial part at this point.
Any other speakers in the public hearing portion? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open for Commissioner discussion. Yes, Mr. Polster?
I've got, uh, several points, uh, and, and the first one is, as I recall, when we went through the DRC and we were discussing the commercial piece, I think, uh, one of the items was to retain the restaurant, uh, on that. I don't know if that's still true. Uh, maybe either the applicant or staff can confirm that.
Yeah, the goal would be, I mean, there's a restaurant to serve the hotel with a commercial kitchen there, so that would be a natural use.
And as I understand it, Mr. Getty, from the presentation, it was newly renovated and all the rest of it, which is why you wanted to take advantage of probably keeping it.
Yeah.
And, and if, I may be wrong about this, but something about beauty shops or something of that nature that would serve the clientele?
It seems like that would be the natural fit in, in a space like that.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Getty.
I think with that, too, was the idea that the restaurant had hosted rock legends, right? They had artifacts, and it sounded like a great proposal for the restaurant space at the DRC.
First off is, I'm really happy to see this come forward. Jack and I were the ones that sat on the comp plan five years ago, and one of the issues that we had to grapple with besides affordable housing and opportunities for that was how to deal with the increase in projected population that we thought we were going to have in 2040, one hundred and twenty thousand, of which we're about ninety-one now. So, that's not that far. So, one of the things that we came up with and changed the land use map was to take the area along Pocahontas Trail and change it to mixed-use to get a higher density for, inside of the PSA for it. So, I'm really super happy to see this, plus it's a rehabilitation of the property that was going downhill. The other piece that Mr. Holloman and I really were in favor of when we sat down at the DRC was that to listen to their plans for affordable housing in terms of the sixteen, eighty, and one hundred and twenty percent. And please understand, that's the policy that was adopted by the board but is inside of the ordinance in terms of a density bonus to be able to come up with the numbers that they, that they have. I'm not so sure about the one hundred and twenty percent, but, you know, I want the sixty and the eighty percent to be there also. And so, from that point of view, between of rehabilitating this piece of property, using it for affordable housing, and the folks that are doing the development are not new to this in terms of operations they've done in North Carolina, New Jersey, and other places in Virginia, but here in Williamsburg. And so, they come with a reputation, but the other piece of that is the property management and how you deal with that is as important to me than anything else because this thing stretches over twenty, thirty years for it. So, for all those reasons, I am very supportive of this project.
Yes, Mr. Rogers?
Could I pile on if we go down the road? And also, one of the things that excites me about this particular, oh, let me back up. So, the rock legends with the Grateful Dead is what they told me that stayed there, and some others, and apparently there's, I don't know if they carved in the furniture or whatever, but I'm looking forward to seeing that. But this idea of workforce housing, which we all bring up, I think, all the time, every chance we get, what's extra good about this workforce housing, I think, is that it's so central, not even just to our community, but to the city of Williamsburg, and that it puts the people who need it closer to where they work. I've studied this a bit, and in many cities and even urban areas, sometimes they put the workforce housing where there's really not good bus routes, or there's, it's self-defeating if you're too far away from where those sorts of jobs exist. So, this brings those apartments in. The only thing I wish would change is this idea that there's going to be workforce families in there and that there's absolutely no space for a playground of some kind. I think children in apartments get, I lived in one, and it gets pretty tight. So, any changes, and there's room for a mod, I'd rather see a swimming pool or tennis court go away and find some way to add something for those children who are coming. But I'm excited to also support this project.
I'm going to support it also. As far as, they could go across the street to Quarterback Park, couldn't they not, play there? No, no.
I know, it's right in the back.
Right, same side of the street. It's like, right there. Because my wife and I went to that park a couple of months ago and with some lunch she got or something. No, I think this is, this is great. The only, it's kind of sad that a local owner of this hotel, we've all gone to the national brands, and it's unfortunate because this is such a unique place. And I first had my, what do you call it, Planning Commission certification, I guess it's called. We actually met there. That was the one we met in Charlottesville, and we also had met there, and it's, I'm glad to see that this is going to turn into apartments that are, you know, affordable for folks. Great.
Yeah, two would support this. I thought this was a great idea. I was at the DRC meeting where it was originally pitched, and I thought it was a great use of the property and I think a great job. Kudos to the staff and the applicant putting all of this together. I think it's a great, a great plan, and I fully support it.
I'm a fan of it. I thank you for answering my question. I'm still trying to wrap my brain around the median income and how that impacts, you know, the different percentages and the levels of income. I always think about trying to staff a building in a school, and teachers are saying, I just can't afford to live in Williamsburg. I hear that over and over and over again. But this, this is really exciting, and I went to my prom dinner in that restaurant. So, thank you for trying to keep it open. It was years ago, a long time.
I'll jump on this bandwagon as well and just add that, yeah, I'm very excited to see this project. I think it's really creative and needed use. I like to see a repurposing of existing space in this way. We talk, you know, as Mr. Pollster mentioned, a lot about workforce housing. There's clearly a need in the community for that. And although I, too, am a bit ambivalent about the one hundred and twenty percent AMI categorization, I'm super happy to see the large proportion of housing in this development that's dedicated to workforce, workforce affordability. So, that's really great, and like I say, I very much appreciate that this is a repurposing of an underused space in James City County. So, that's great, and I will support it as well. Any other discussion items, or I'll entertain a motion? Yes, Mr. Pollster?
I'd like to propose that the Planning Commission recommended the board approval of rezoning twenty-four dash zero zero one four and master plan twenty-five dash zero zero one, Fort Magruder mixed-use rezoning.
With conditions?
No conditions. Just the proffer.
Oh, yeah, just the proffer. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Ms. Essentis, will you call the roll?
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Everson?
Aye.
Mr. May?
Aye.
Dr. Haskins?
Aye.
Dr. Alman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Z dash two-three dash zero 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 four slash MP dash two-three dash zero 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 one, Westwood Park rezoning. Ms. Reisinger, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. Mr. Jason Grimes of AES Consulting Engineers and Mr. Vernon Getty of Getty Harris Frank & Hickman have applied on behalf of ABVA Development to rezone an approximately seventy-nine point five-six acre portion of property located at forty-six oh one Ironbound Road. The property is currently zoned PL, public land, is inside the primary service area, and is designated as federal, state, or county land on the twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan land east map. This application requests to rezone the property from PL to PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, to include a maximum of one hundred and eighty-six residential dwellings, of which eighty-six will be single-family detached units, and one hundred will be single-family attached and multifamily units. This corresponds to a proposed residential density of three point four-four units per developable acre. Twenty percent of the homes, or thirty-eight homes, will be made affordable to those making up to eighty percent of the area median income. The proposal also includes a maximum of forty thousand square feet of commercial and office uses. Access to the development would be provided by an extension of Discovery Park Boulevard, and proposed landscape buffers for the site include a fifty-foot-wide buffer from properties adjacent to Discovery Park Boulevard, a one-hundred-foot-wide buffer from the properties along Rollison Drive in Newtown, and a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-wide buffer provided from Route one ninety-nine. The proposed recreational amenities include a swimming pool and bathhouse, at least six acres of passive parks, including areas for picnics and grilling, two playgrounds, and at least three thousand linear feet of soft-surface trails. The proposed residential density requires two density bonus points for the development. To meet the required density bonus points, the applicant has proposed to undertake a stormwater management facility retrofit at the Courthouse Green Development, which is located in the same sub watershed. Staff finds that this bonus point item is met, which corresponds to one and a half density bonus points. The applicant has also proposed binding design guidelines, and staff finds that this bonus point item is met, which corresponds to zero point five density bonus points. The property is located in the Powhatan Creek watershed and reserved for consistency with the watershed master plan. In addition to the stormwater management facility retrofit proposed for the density bonus points, the application also proposes another retrofit in Newtown Block Eight, as well as a stormwater management facility outfall repair for the SunTrust Building BMP in Newtown. The application also ensures the submission of a master stormwater plan with all stormwater management facility outfalls having outlet protection designed for one-hundred-year post-development storm events and compliance with the most updated version of the county's special stormwater criteria. Overall, staff finds that the application is consistent with the Powhatan Creek watershed master plan. During the twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan update process, a land east application, LU dash twenty dash year zero zero two, was submitted requesting to change the land east designation for this portion of the property from federal, state, or county land to the mixed-use Newtown designation. At its June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan, including this land east application. Following consideration by the Board of Supervisors, consideration of the land east application was deferred to be reviewed concurrently with the rezoning application, and guidance was received to change the proposed land east designation to mixed-use Eastern State. Staff finds that this application is consistent with the proposed draft language for the mixed-use Eastern State designation. Staff finds the following factors favorable for this application. The proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance and adopted policies. The proposal is consistent with the twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan and workforce and affordable housing recommendations. The development is expected to have a positive key middle of fiscal impact. The proposal passes the adequate public schools facilities test. The proposal passes the adequate transportation facilities test. The proposal has satisfied the requirement for two density bonus points, and the Parks and Recreation Department staff found the proposed amenities generally consistent with the Parks and Recreation master plan. Prior to tonight's meeting, staff received correspondence from Citizens, which was provided to the Planning Commission for your reference. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to the Board of Supervisors subject to the proposed proffers. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time, and the applicant team is in attendance as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? I have one quick question, if that's all right. I'm wondering if you could talk us through what the steps are beyond this point. So, this is a rezoning application and adjustment to the master plan. I know that some residents are concerned about things like seeing a fuller watershed management plan and things like this, but, you know, this is indicated in the application that it will be completed at various stages in the future. Could you just briefly talk, talk us through what happens after this point before, you know, ground is broken on the site?
Sure. Should the application be approved? There are two proffers proposed, one for a stormwater management master plan, which will have to be submitted by the applicant three months before any development plan for the property, which will give our Stormwater and Resource Protection Division staff a chance to review and work with the applicant to make sure the overall approach will be approvable when it gets to the development stage. And additionally, there is also a utility master plan required, which also is required three months before a submission of a development plan, which gives our Service Authority staff a chance to look at what that proposed utility infrastructure is and if there's any required off-site improvements, such as improving a lift station.
And that development plan, does that come back to the Planning Commission at any point or to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, much like the item on your consent agenda calendar this morning, major subdivisions are subject to approval through the Planning Commission, but not as a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ask a follow-on, too?
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. So, when you have the proffer to do work together on the stormwater management plan, what happens if that breaks down? Like, what happens if there's no meeting of the minds?
So, it requires that the Stormwater and Resource Protection Division approve that master plan before approval of any final development plan on the property. So, if there was a disagreement between staff and the applicant and that master stormwater plan is not approved, then no development plan can be approved and no construction can begin on the property.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Reisinger. Are there any disclosures by Planning Commissioners? Yes, Mr. Pollster?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Getty.
Any other disclosures? All right. In that case, I will open the public comment, and we do have a few speaker cards, starting with the representative of the applicant, Vernon Getty.
Again, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Vernon Getty of eleven seventy-seven Jamestown Road, and it is my pleasure to be here tonight representing ABVA Development. The applicant here with ABVA, Mike Youngblood is one of the two managers, Ken Allen being the other, both of whom, I will point out, are James City County residents. Again, Jason Grimes is here with AES, and John Hopkey, the architect and planner on the job, is also here. ABVA is a locally-based development company that's developed most of the residential neighborhoods in Newtown, including the Charlotte Park, Roper Park, Shirley Park, Chelsea Green, and Abbey Commons neighborhoods. And they've also developed a number of commercial properties and mixed-use buildings in Newtown. As you know, this property is now owned by the Commonwealth of Virginia and is part of the Eastern State property that has been declared surplus and is being sold by the state. ABBA has actually been working on this project for about five years now. It started with the last comprehensive plan update, as Morgan indicated, and at that time, the original proposal in the comp plan update was to develop this property as a part of Newtown and at a higher density than this proposal. The proposal then was for a combination of one hundred and fifty multifamily units and one hundred and ninety thousand square feet of commercial use in eighty-five single-family homes, and the proposal had two road entrances connections to Newtown. Mike and the applicant attended town hall meetings in Newtown, met with representatives of the Board of the Newtown Residential Association, talked to many individual residents, and received quite a bit of feedback. And based on that feedback, a number of changes have been made to the proposal. So, you've probably seen there's some rather unusual-looking proffers, but they're all in response to requests made by residents. So, this property will not be a part of Newtown, will not use the Newtown name. You've noticed it's Westwood Park. The second road access, which was off Olive Drive and into the property, has been eliminated from the plan, and the piece of fifty feet of right-of-way that would have given them access has been conveyed to the Residential Association at that point, so it is now owned by the association. The only road and trail connection would be right there, Discovery Park Boulevard, which, right-of-way for Discovery Park goes right to the property line. Westwood Park will have its own independent owners' association and its own separate recreational amenities. There's no cross-use or anything like that. It's a standalone development, and the intensity has been reduced. We're proposing eighty-six single-family detached homes, one hundred townhome multifamily units, and forty thousand square feet of commercial. And as Morgan mentioned, there is a hundred-foot buffer on our side of the property line behind the Shirley Park neighborhood in Newtown. There's a fifty-foot buffer on their side, so it's effectively over one hundred and fifty feet and actually much longer from back of house to back of house. Couple things I'll show you. This is a binding master plan sheet, but here's the entrance into the property at the end of Discovery Park. This area is the multifamily mixed-use area and single-family here, and you can see the hundred-foot And you can see the 100-foot buffer is shown here along the back of the residential area in Newtown. Smaller buffer here along this commercial area. This, in fact, is a stormwater BMP, I think, and a pump station. So you come in on either side of the entrance here, there's multifamily development coming into this courtyard-type area where there'll be mixed-use buildings or commercial buildings. Other multifamily development around it with the single-family back over here, the 86 lots. See parkland, major park areas right here in the middle extending down. And then pocket parks here, and another here, and then you'll pool complex area. This is just a zoom in on the multifamily commercial area. As you come in, as I said, residential on either side. The commercial really dead center in the middle, surrounded by townhouses and multifamily units. There are a series of images right out of the design guidelines that Morgan mentioned. But this is looking, this is Discovery Park Boulevard coming into the property. So these are the commercial buildings here. Townhouse. That's looking the other direction. Wanted to show the pool complex. It's obviously not an Olympic pool, but it's based on their residents' preferences. It is two-lane lap pool with area over here for adults to hang out in, and then there's the shallows for children to play. So they feel it's exactly what their folks are looking for. Townhouse elevations from the design guidelines. Multifamily elevations. And these are mixed-use. Some of these buildings, you'll see on these, actually have parking underneath the building. This is a blow-up of the residential area. And just a couple images here, this is that first intersection, shows what a house might look like. That pocket park I mentioned with the bus stop sort of gazebo here. Another pocket park here, and one of these, there'll be grilling stations, picnic area, those sort of amenities. See the start of the trail system leading back into that major central park. House elevations from the design guidelines. Again, thank planning staff, especially Morgan, who's worked with us on project for a long time. And we obviously agree with their staff recommendation of approval. And it's, we've worked very hard with them over a long period of time to get here. I think the end result is a project that's consistent with your zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan proposed designation for this property. I think we've met the requests we got from the Newtown Residential Association. We've met the requirements for the needed density bonus. And I'll make a quick comment here, because looking at the density of this project and the density of Newtown, you might think we were higher. What has happened? The rules have changed in the meantime. And density used to be calculated on your gross acreage. And of course, as you know, it's now on your net developable acreage. So apples to apples, this is actually less dense than most of Newtown. We've addressed the workforce, affordable housing element per the comprehensive plan. This project will have a positive cumulative fiscal impact. It meets the adequate public schools facility tests, the adequate transportation facilities test. We provided the additional buffering to the Newtown residential areas. It's consistent with the Powhatan Creek watershed study. We have proffered, as Morgan has discussed, the master stormwater management plan to be approved prior to submitting any development plans. We've proffered the BMP retrofits and repairs she described. There is a proffer of a master utilities plan. And there's also a phasing proffer to, again, ensure that commercial space comes online during the development. John Hopkey has done a, I think, superb set of design guidelines for the project. It will ensure it is very attractive and compatible with Newtown, even though we're not a part of Newtown. But this is the one area, those plans will be reviewed by the Newtown Design Review Board. And the reason for that is it's been done in all the peripheral projects around Newtown that are not actually within Newtown. They have submit plans to thetown Design Review. All compatible, and so we agreed to it as well. The impacts from the proposal, I think, are all mitigated. And it's a pleasure for me to stand in front of you all with a application that has a staff report that only lists factors favorable. That doesn't happen real often, so. Glad to be here to do that tonight. And again, we'd be happy to answer any questions or, and then again, would respectfully ask you recommend approval to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Getty. Any questions for the applicant's representative? I just have one quick question for you, Mr. Getty, if that's all right. I'm interested in the homeowners association. And, you know, as, as a standard with any HOA, there's a capital contribution for folks who move into the neighborhood. And I have two questions on this. One is, is the capital contribution a one-off contribution, or is it a regular monthly contribution?
Well, there are two, two elements there. There's often an initial capital contribution when a property is purchased that goes into reserve funds, but there is then the assessment. And HOAs are required to do reserve studies that are projections of the funds they will need to meet their obligations to maintain things. So that forms the basis of the annual assessment, and however often it's billed. So yes, there is a mechanism to ensure funds are available to maintain things when needed.
And is there likely to be a monthly contribution for homeowners as well, given the facilities that are in the property?
Not a monthly, the capital contributions are typically a one-time thing on the sale of property. The assessments are usually assessed, there's an annual assessment, it's often billed monthly. So yes, people may be paying a monthly, it may be quarterly, I don't know that that decision's been made, but.
Thank you. And my second question is related. I'm just kind of curious, is that HOA contribution factored into the affordability? So in, in terms of the cost of a property in those different bands for workforce, for workforce housing, how does the HOA capital contribution factor?
I don't know. Mike has done quite a bit of affordable work in Newtown.
Would you like to come up and maybe introduce yourself as well? Thank you.
I'm, I'm Mike Youngblood. I'm one of the managing partners with, with ABBA. And addressing the, the affordability, we in Newtown were involved in approximately 75 affordable homes. And there were two, there was another tier of pricing for the affordable homes. And there is somebody here that might be able to address that specifically in terms of today, the presence of the Residential Association is here. And it's my understanding that we still have two tiers. One for, for the affordable homes, and another one for the market rate.
I see. So the HOA fee is different for those two categories?
Yes, that would probably be a quicker way to answer.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify. No, no, that's, that's great. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the?
Can we confirm that? I mean, I understand the affordability for 60 and 80%, but does it apply? Do you, since it's a yearly account, are you getting a 60 or 80% on the monthly or yearly assessment?
I think that calculation is based strictly on percentage of income. Not sure HOA fees factor into it.
That, that's really the question. So whether or not I have an affordable apartment, or I'm a ratepayer, is the HOA fee the same for both categories? Yes or no?
What Mike has suggested, and the ones they've done in Newtown so far, the answer is no, they're not the same.
I think we actually do have an upcoming speaker from the Newtown Residence Association, so we could potentially ask.
Well, I think your, your question is, is, is because there, whatever happened in Newtown in the HOA is immaterial, because this project will have a different HOA.
Exactly, yeah.
And so the question is, is for the new HOA and the governance of that, will they do the same thing?
I heard him say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next speaker card is for Jack Espinol. This is a reminder for all speakers, you have three minutes, and please state your full name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jack Espinol. I live at 4615 Town Creek Drive in Williamsburg, and I am the president of the Newtown Residential Association. And I really appreciate the developers' efforts working with us to resolve the concerns that we had with the development. We are really pleased with the increased buffer area, and we're pleased with the one access to the development on Discovery. However, I do have one concern, and that concern is Casey Boulevard. Just recently, the speed bump at Casey and about Town Creek Drive was removed. That was a major item that slowed people down. And now I believe that people will be coming down Casey Boulevard from the Settlers Market area and will be zipping over to Discovery Drive without any kind of stop. And I've already noticed that with the, even with the cones in place. So we really need to get a four-way stop put in at Casey Boulevard and Center Street. And I really want to ask you for help on that. And a stoplight or a stop sign over Discovery would be really valuable. So those are my, my thoughts about the, the community. I really like the idea of connecting our trails, and I know it's open to be able to connect in more places. And I think Olive Drive would be a good place to do another connection with the trails when they get those trails planned. So thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker card is Ann Hewitt.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Ann Hewitt, and I live at 147 Raleigh Street on Powhatan Creek, where I have been for 35 years. I am respectfully requesting that this Westwood Park rezoning application be indefinitely deferred or rejected for the following reasons. I've only chosen three. There are a thousand, but three is good enough. The applicant has refused to comply with requests from Stormwater and Resource Protection Division to submit a stormwater management plan through the permit link system prior to submittal of the, prior to submittal of the initial development plan. So there is no stormwater management plan, and hence there is no SSC's special stormwater criteria as required. There are no floodplain impact designed to the 100-year floodplain as required. No revised plan for water quality treatment, and no outfall locations are designated. And lastly, the proposed BMP locations that are submitted are all upstream of most of the development. So without these and other safeguards, flooding downstream is a certainty. So this pattern, I might add that I have been working very closely with Stormwater Division, so that I have documents that explain where, from which I got all these, got all this, and his requests. So the, the pattern of continuous failure to comply speaks volumes to the applicant's intent, in my opinion. So it's to complete a short-end run in order to gain quick approval without having to buy the property or show any accountability for environmental safeguarding of our watershed and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker card is for Ken Goldsmith.
Hi, good evening. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to have to ask you to bear with me, just speaking tonight. My name is Ken Goldsmith, and I live at 258 Sandy Bay Road in Williamsburg, it's in James City County. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a group called Friends of Powhatan Creek. You may, many of you may remember there was a similar group some years ago that used to appear before you, development plans. And I'd say we're a descendant of that organization. We are asking you tonight to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they deny this application for rezoning and master plan approval. I'd like to start by talking a little bit about Powhatan Creek itself. I've heard it said that the creek is, at some meetings, county leadership, that the creek is beyond saving. And I vehemently disagree with that. The creek has challenges, particularly with degraded tributary streams upstream and with high fecal coliform bacteria contamination in the lower reaches. But I can tell you unequivocally that the Powhatan Creek is a vibrant, diverse, and ecologically healthy river. I live right on the creek. I own a significant stretch of waterfront south of the Jamestown Road Bridge. And I can tell you, I regularly see otter, mink, beaver, muskrat right outside in front of my house. The creek's an important wintering area and migratory bird, migratory stopover area for waterfowl, and it hosts numerous rare endangered species. I'm told that the fishery is very similar to the great fishery in Chickahominy, the Chickahominy. And I certainly see men and women out there fishing every single day of the year. And finally, the creek's a great recreational area. On a nice summer day, there are sometimes dozens of people out on the creek in canoes, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, and a whole bunch of other craft. It's a creek that deserves our attention, our care, and our best efforts to mitigate the effects of upstream development. The Friends of Powhatan Creek have grave concerns about this application. The applicant proposes a large, dense development on a very environmentally sensitive site. At the same time, they've decided not to provide you with some of the most important environmental, most important information. They'll let you evaluate the environmental impacts of this project and the ways you might mitigate them. I'm going to highlight a few of those concerns, and they fall into two main, main areas. First are the impacts on Powhatan Creek and its tributaries. This development will create a lot of stormwater runoff and pollution. But there's no stormwater, as you know, there's no stormwater management plan, which of course is the part of the plan that lets you evaluate whether they've done the things necessary to minimize these impacts. Instead, they have a very problematic bit of text on their master plan called a stormwater management narrative. It's really just a restatement of the things they're required to do anyway, and slippery language that I'll get into in a moment. With a proffer, the applicant promises to provide a stormwater management plan in the future, which is something they're required to do anyway. And I would submit that, in fact, they're required to prevent, to provide you a stormwater management plan as part of the rezoning application. They're not able to defer it to a future date. Let me just point out a couple of very disturbing aspects of this approach. Number one, you don't know even whether this plan can be built as presented. You don't know where the stormwater infrastructure is going to be, what BMPs have to be put in place. As the county Stormwater and Resource Protection staff has noted, the only pond in the plan is upstream of the development. You don't know how much runoff or pollution will be directed downstream into Powhatan Creek at all. Number two, the applicant continues to insist on reserving the ability to satisfy some of their water pollution control requirements by using off-site nutrient credits. Let's be clear, we've checked with the state DEQ. There is no nutrient credit bank in the Powhatan Creek watershed. So any use of credits, by definition, means more water pollution in Powhatan Creek. The, the comment letters from the SRP staff repeatedly told the applicant they wouldn't be allowed to do this. The approved Powhatan Creek watershed master plan specifically recommends, in section 3.2.2, that you do not allow out-of-water shed nutrient bank, credits from out-of-water shed nutrient banks. And yet the applicant still wants to gain your, your approval, right there in the fine print, to do this. It's in the fine print of that stormwater management narrative. The second area of grave concern is the consideration of endangered species and sensitive habitats on this parcel. of endangered species and sensitive habitats on this parcel, or rather, the lack of consideration. There is no natural resources inventory included in this application. A consultant for the applicant reported in early 2021 that most of the parcel was in a state Department of Conservation and Recreation, Conservation Site, and was recommended that a survey be conducted for the federally endangered small-world Pogonia flower and other sensitive species. Now, in fact, most or all of this parcel is identified by the state DCR as part of the Powhatan Creek Tributary East Conservation Site. This land has been assigned a biodiversity rank of B2, a site of very high significance. James City County Ordinance, section twenty-four dash twenty-three, requires that a preliminary natural resources inventory be submitted with the request for rezoning if the property is identified as being in any B1, B2, or B3 areas. Section twenty-four dash fifty-one states that if the inventory concludes there is a suitable habitat, a conservation management plan must be submitted. As far as we can determine, none of this has been done. The applicant's community impact statement, even now, says, quote, "Additional studies shall occur based on time of year requirements in the future." So four years later, again, as far as we can determine, no surveys have been done. I'd like to hand you a couple of items here. These are from the application for rezoning of the adjacent Eastern State Hospital parcel for proposed development called Cardinal Ridge. This is, that's the parcel that's just to the north of this one. The area circled on the map is approximately the location of this parcel that's before you tonight. This kind of information hasn't been submitted by the applicant. In fact, there's no mention anywhere in the application that parcel C is a B2 biodiversity area, even though it's required by the ordinance. So with this, with the information presented to you so far, you have no idea whether there's threatened or rare species on the parcel, or whether the design of this proposal has been, has been, has taken that into consideration in any way. Furthermore, this parcel has been identified as an ecological core by the state and a habitat core in the county's natural and cultural asset plan. It is, in fact, one of the last intact habitat cores in the most highly developed portion of the county. The high ecological value of the site is as a large intact area of mature forest. The high ecological, excuse me, the DCR notes that its ecological core values begin a hundred meters from the edge of the forest and send inward. So it's the inside of the forest parcel that's the high-value habitat. The applicant acknowledges that the property is a so-called wildlife habitat core and offers a wildlife corridor through the center of the project, which is simply a slender area between the rows of houses. I can tell you as a trained urban planner with a specialty in landscape ecology that this wildlife corridor would have zero ecological value for the species that depend on interior forest habitat. This plan, if approved, would completely destroy the habitat values that make this place special and unique, as recognized by the state. As you know, rezoning a master plan approval is a legislative act by the Board of Supervisors. This means it's 100% discretionary. The Eastern State Hospital property may eventually be developed, but doesn't have to be developed at this density or in this configuration. Even more importantly, no application should be approved that does not include all the required information about the project's environmental impacts and the natural resources affected. The Board of Supervisors approved a resolution in 2012 titled Environmental Constraints Analysis for Legislative Cases. If you'd allow me, I'd like to read a very short excerpt from the beginning of this resolution. Whereas in order to fully understand the impacts of a development on the local environment, consistent information should be provided to the planning staff and members of the planning commission and Board of Supervisors prior to approval of a legislative case, which is special permits and rezonings. A thorough environmental analysis will ensure that development is not planned for areas which may not be able to accommodate it due to environmental constraints. Among the things listed as required in this resolution are a stormwater plan and detailed information about potential endangered species and habitat on the parcel. We at Friends of Powhatan Creek strongly believe this application does not meet either the letter or the spirit of this resolution and of the county ordinance. We ask you to recommend denial of this application. Thank you. Brilliant, welcome to answer any questions.
Are there any other speakers who did not submit speaker cards who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open for commissioner discussion.
I'll start off. It is one, I think, I've watched this now for five years. We went through the comprehensive plan five years ago, and there were two land use applications, one for the West Park and the other half of the Eastern State. And as Mr. Getty said, the board deferred it for it. It was deferred a second time because the board wanted to see the results of the Powhatan watershed master plan in terms of making their final decision. And so when I look at the presentation and the application, I must say that from looking at a staff report, I've never seen anything so complete and detailed. I mean, it has everything down there, you don't have to go scraping through all of the attachments or whatever, the arguments are there, boom, boom, boom. For Mr. Getty and his team, they've worked very hard to try to bring this now, what, three years, and the different deferrals? And they've done this with the help of the Newtown Homeowners Association with their concerns. So I would agree that they've worked very hard to try to make this thing fit, to include decreasing the density, to come up with that. And I won't go into the, how they got their density bonuses, but that'll come later. So when I look at this, you know, right here, it looks like it ticks all the bells, right? But when I look at it like this and say, okay, the board deferred looking at this thing because they wanted to see the results of the Powhatan watershed master plan. So what did that watershed plan say about this sub watershed, which the Eastern State is? Well, if you go back and you look at that watershed master plan that was just approved here a year ago, you'll see that we've been looking at the first master plan, watershed master plan in 2000. Then there was an update in 2008. And then the last one that was done in, what, 221? Yeah, I think it's 221, 222. And one of the things that you look at is the development has driven this sub watershed from supportable, excellent, to non-supportable. And why, well, how did they come up with that conclusion? Well, in each of these cases, as you looked at the 2000, the 2008, and the 2023, it had to do with the amount of impervious surface and the amount of phosphorus nitrogen, dah dah dah, which is why we build these watershed plants, to mitigate that. I mean, that's the whole idea of trying to mitigate the water quality within the county, whether it's the Powhatan watershed or whatever. And so the staff and the applicant, Mr. Grimes, was very aware of that study. And so when you look at this sub watershed, which includes the portions of Newtown, there are two streams that are suboptimal and six BMPs that are recommendation for retrofit because of the deterioration, of which, one of them that they're posing for a density, belongs to the county at the courthouse. Let the county fix its problem, let Newtown fix its problem. And the one identified isn't on the list. But, you know, that's how they're getting their density bonuses to be able to do this. But what they've ignored, and I hate to use that word, because at one point in the process, when you look at the watershed master plan and you look at the stream on the western edge of this property, can we bring up map three-zero, please? It was also Mr. Getty's presentation. Yep, there you go, just passed it. When you look at that stream on the northeast side, it's actually the border, it's a stream bed, but it's also the property line. And about across from that crosshatch area, if you went right across from there, somewhere in that area on that border, is a 340-foot stream bed stream that was identified in the master plan for a renovation. And in fact, during the process between the staff and the developer, there was a proposal at one time to try to correct the entire stream bed, which is poor. And so it gets to, well, how does this happen? Well, when you do development and you end up putting junk in the thing, and you have more density in that thing, and you don't do the corrective things, or if you put corrective things in there that don't work, which is what we're seeing in the Newtowns there, all you do is compound it. You don't have a chance to bring back the watershed by mitigating that. Now, I would agree with the applicant that that stream bed is only partially in their area, the rest of it is in the other half of it. But the area that was earmarked, that 340 feet, ST-49G, was. And at one point, there was a proposal in the proffer to try to do something about that, but was withdrawn for whatever reason. So I'm back to, here is what we were looking at. But when I look back at the overall health of this watershed and the concerns that we have, and I don't see it mitigated, I don't know when that happens. Well, here, here's how it happens. Over the last 10 years, the county has spent $16 million for stream restoration and fixing problems that were of the past, of our CIP dollars. Why is it that the county should continue to try to fix something that in fact the developer could have taken the opportunity to step up? Now, I'm not condemning what they did or not, I'm just saying, what about the larger picture, and what about fixing the real problem here? And so when the gentleman got up here and he talked about the vibrancy of the watershed, he's right. There are sections of the downstream area that are valid. But guess what's going to happen because of the continued development and impacts that we have? It all flows downstream. And so there was a real opportunity here in my mind to be able to mitigate a problem, not fix all of it, but mitigate a problem as opposed to getting a density bonus for something that was somebody else's problem, that they should fix. And in fact, when you look at the inspection reports for those that are identified, at some point, the county will be able to force them to do that. But it'll be too late, too, because it'll be the worst. So I'd like to see us be more proactive about this and fixing it. So I have no intention to recommend to the board that this be approved because of those reasons.
Other discussion?
What would you want them to do?
They could have had, as they had before, and I can't, that's up to them to decide that, they had a proffer to fix that stream bed. And I would have been great with that, to tell you the truth, because they would have stepped up to fix a problem. Now, not all the problems in that stream bed or in this section belong to them. The other half of this development has responsibilities for that. There are upstream problems that belong to Newtown that should be fixed.
Isn't that covered by the, I guess it's proffer number seven for their master plan before they can do anything? Wouldn't that be covered as stormwater management?
No. No. And that's the other piece that was brought up here, is there isn't a master plan for me to even look at. I mean, so one of the reasons I was talking about the Ford's Village piece was they did show us, and by the way, they are not legally binding in section twenty-three-four of the zoning piece to do a master plan, a stormwater plan, not required to, by ordinance. But the reason I did the Ford's County, Ford's Village piece is they not only had those BMPs identified, but then in their follow-on, they had the detail of where it could impact that stream bed and taking the responsibility for it. So.
It says that they have to have this plan, master plan, before they can do anything else. I'm not sure what your.
The master plan does not include, nor is there a proffer to fix the stream bed identified in the master plan, period. It does not. It was in there, it was withdrawn. Go ahead, please.
Oh, yes, please, Mr. Getty, come up.
I can address that. We did, in fact, have quite a bit of conversation with staff about a stream restoration proffer. And we had offered a proffer that said we would, we'll back up. This parcel will contribute about 20% of the drainage that goes into that stream. The problems that have led to the degradation of that stream aren't really from Newtown, certainly not from this property, it's not developed. They're coming from the end of Tuning Road, and they're coming from the Eastern State project, where water is just coming with no stormwater management at all. And so we were initially offered to have the design for the stream restoration, and I think this segment is 540 feet, according to my copy of the watershed study, to design a stream restoration. And we would do 20% of it, commiserate with our contribution to it. Or we would contribute $250,000 to stream restoration. And then it became clear there were several issues with that, one of which is the county doesn't have a CIP project, we understand, to accept that money. So that wouldn't have worked. It, with the problems that cause this being upstream and not being addressed, it didn't make sense for us to do what AES thinks is probably a million-dollar-plus stream restoration and have it blown out in the first big storm. So we changed gears, and this is something we would have done, both for compliance with the watershed study, but for a density bonus as well. You have two options for the density bonus, stream restoration or BMP retrofit. So at that point, we made the decision with staff to switch to the BMP retrofit. It's not any lack of commitment to Powhatan Creek, it just didn't seem to make sense to restore a stream and then watch it get blown out. So that was our reasoning.
Mr. Everstyn, another question for Mr. Getty.
Yeah, Mr. Getty. So what you're saying is that the problem with that stream is, originates at the Eastern State, the state property that we have, it's there now.
Right. If you see where the boundary behind the multifamily section goes, and that stream continues up like back of Tuning Road and where Colonial Mental Health is, and that's where water is just coming out uncontrolled. Jason, yeah, he can.
I can point to, so, and like I said, Vern pointed out very correctly. We studied this, we started looking at it. My concern is there are large pipes that dump into this stream right here. And this is what is identified in the study as the poor streams. And there's a large 48-inch pipe here, was put in probably in the early 50s with the construction of Eastern State. There was no stormwater management regulations at the time. So that just dumps free-flowing. Every time there's a large storm event, that's just going to get a big flush of water down that stream. So you get pockets of erosion, there's some pockets of wetlands along here. So there's definitely things that can be done to the stream. Unfortunately, without correcting the upstream problem, anything you do to repair or try to mitigate it in the stream just stands a chance of being blown out with the next big storm. So we didn't feel like it was prudent to install that. We tried to figure out a way, is there a way to set aside the money until other developments come on board where there's enough money to do the whole thing and correct the upstream drainage? But short of that, there wasn't a way for us to make the improvements that we thought were prudent to the channel that would be a long-term benefit to the county. So that was kind of the change in direction.
A possibility that the, the sale of this property to you all, that they would, the state would then fix their problem that's being caused here by that, what, 48-inch pipe, whatever it is in the 50s?
There's multiple pipes, but yes, I mean, all this upstream development, everything, obviously, when they built the two new buildings, when they renovated portions of Eastern State, they've put in stormwater management associated directly with those. But then there's obviously all the older buildings that are out there, and parking lots are just uncontrolled and discharged into that.
Have no intention of.
Properties for sale and. Properties for sale and...
Gladly cooperate in any restoration project at a time it makes sense. I mean, granting easements and doing our work to be...
I think the issue is not the stream bed, because the stream bed is poor. But it's not only from the Tuning Road. It's also from the Newtown. And the two Chisel Run Creeks that dump into that are part of the problem also, as well as there are identified outfalls on the Newtown property that add to that. I do not remember seeing any outfall from the sand tech on the upside of it, period. And it's not identified as a problem, as opposed to the other side. Now, as to the stream bed, there are two sections of that stream bed that were identified for restoration. I agree that you're not responsible for the stuff that's not on your property or will be on your property. The argument that I have is when you draw the property line, which is being negotiated between you and the state at this point, I can't tell if it includes that stream bed in your property. And I have asked that question. On top of it, if this thing does become approved, then it goes to the zoning, and then we decide where the parcel line. So what's more important to me is who owns that stretch of the stream? And if it belongs to you, then at some point, you should be liable to fix that restoration. But at this point, I can't determine that because there's never been an answer to those questions. And so because of all those things, okay, there is an identified string restoration project. And what's more is when you finally do get your watershed master plan, I'm sure it's going to dump into that area down there and be part of the problem without it being fixed. And so for all those reasons, until we can sort out, whether it's both of these projects at the same time that we take responsibility for, all we're doing is compounding the problem that's already there in terms of the watershed by not fixing it. And this proposal does not fix it or propose to fix it in any way. So that's the reason I'm not supportive. I would have hoped that you guys could have figured it out with the staff. But apparently, it's not. And I understand that. And that's why I'm going to recommend denial.
I think the answer on the property line is, Morgan can jump in, too. The state has submitted a couple of years ago a proposed subdivision plat that indicates the center line of the stream is the property line. So that whole segment is going to be on both properties. Stream bed is going to be divided.
So the issue is, if it's half and half, would you take responsibility for your half of that stream restoration?
Well, as I said, in our view, our responsibility is 20% of it. And we tried to do that, and it didn't work.
Right. And until that's resolved, and you've really answered the question, it is eventually going to be on your property, your responsibilities for half of it, okay? And if so, you're recognizing the fact that it is a problem and is going to be fixed. And so until that can be resolved either on either side, I don't see why we should let any more development go in there and continue to dump and destroy that environment out there without a mitigation. It doesn't make sense to me.
And the purpose of the stormwater management plan is to be sure we're not dumping uncontrolled into that same stream and exacerbating the problem. That's what SRP will be doing in the review of the stormwater master plan.
I've asked that question of the staff, and I have issues with the outfall pieces that we have and the design of it. And what will happen, and we just like the SPLN that we just had, when that comes back for approval, I don't know if that'll be sorted out or not because there's nothing that I can do at this end of it, unless I can cause this, point to something specifically in the ordinance, which I tried to do at one time before. So I'm not, I'm not buying into the fact that the staff or when this thing comes back to us again, that that's going to be fixed. And I don't see why the county should take that chance.
Frank, it's going to sell this property. Someone's going to get it. And it seems to me with the, with the master plan not to contribute anymore, I mean, what are you going to do? I mean, if the state is dumping stuff there, we have no control over that.
That ship sailed. That ship has sailed. That's never going to happen on the state's side. I'm more concerned about what's going to happen when we do the development and how we fix that. And that's what I'm concerned about, and that's what I want to hear about.
They're saying that they're going to have a stormwater management plan that be approved not to make it any worse.
Their management plan doesn't say they're going to restore that stream bed. And that's the issue. Oh, okay, that's where I am.
Other discussion from commissioners? Sorry, Mr. Everson.
Morgan, to Frank's issue about restoring this stream bed, when, or stream, when you do this master stormwater management plan, will that not include the stream issue?
I don't believe it would include the requirement to restore the stream or a portion of it, but it is looking at the quality and quantity for that stormwater on-site. And that's ultimately what stormwater is looking to make sure is being handled for the development.
The purpose of the stormwater master management plan is not to make the current situation worse. If I got that right?
I believe so. Just with the actual development plan that will come in, where those stormwater facilities are located, how they operate, what the choices are for those capacities, and certainly the applicant can expand on it. But yeah, so just to handle the stormwater caused by the development.
Ask anything more of somebody?
Of course I can. And of course, they tried, the stormwater guys tried to do that by holding them responsible because they had this plan in there, and it showed the stream restoration area. And they said, hey, would you fix this? The stormwater guys have been talking about this for two years. But they couldn't come to any kind of agreement because what was 22% and what should they do? And I'm just simply saying, I don't want you to do the whole thing because that's unreasonable, okay? I'm just asking you to fix this portion. And when you fix it, I don't particularly care because of the other compounding issues that he's brought up. But I do want to make sure that if it is part of their property, they take responsibility for fixing it at some time, period.
Then you have a major event, and it all gets washed away, is what they've seemed to indicate. So, you know, the problem is off-site for them. I can't see how we can hold them accountable for what's happening from the state facilities.
Well, that's easy. Do you understand why we spent $16 billion? Because a lot of people didn't do their stuff?
I understand.
Okay.
But again, this, you know, what are you going to do about the state? You want to, you know, I mean, unless the state fixes it, they're being... The idea here is that any development project that comes forward doesn't make it worse, and if we're fortunate, maybe makes the situation better.
Oh, no, that's not true. The whole idea of why this sub watershed has gotten to the way it is, it's because of development. And guess what? One of the best things that happened to this watershed is not to develop it. Because all it does is throw more gasoline into the fire for the problem, unless you mitigate the issue, which is what I'm suggesting. And so from 2000, 2008 to 2023, we have seen this disaster happening because of development, and the development and the stormwater pieces not mitigating the issues. Even the new stuff we put in Newtown. So I don't want to see new more development and throw more gasoline on a fire that's already there. That's where I am. So I'd like to see it fixed.
Other discussion? Yes, Mr. Rogers?
I have a little simpler way of looking at things, at least in my mind, or a step back than the specifics in terms of 120 feet or 320 feet of a particular, you know, water stream. But I feel, I feel like our job on this planning commission is at least to start with maybe an idea of to do no harm in any sense, which would be... This strikes me as a cart in front of a horse a little bit in that we're asked to recommend pretty major public lands, lots of natural surface relatively, I think. I mean, I may be speaking exactly on that. But I mean, the Westwood would bring more impervious surfaces, more water moving quickly, more cars, more utilities in an area. And it strikes me that before we reach that zoning question, we should have more of an understanding of what's happening to the Powhatan and that if that natural resource, if we stand by and let it just get destroyed, then perhaps it is gone forever. And so it seems better to me to have water running through grass and bushes and shrubs as bad water than to have it redirected into a few new pipes and push further down the water. So I feel like the package is premature in that I don't have enough of an environmental impact. So the...
I think I'd actually like to echo those comments myself. I think that's how I'm looking at this as well. I feel very much like, although this is a very impressively thorough report, and I, you know, I really do commend the applicants and Ms. Risinger for your work on this, I still was left feeling like I wanted more information, particularly on the environmental impact pieces. I think it is our job, you know, my opinion is that is our job as the commission to take that big-picture perspective because we deal with cases in a piecemeal manner. That is the way in which cases come to us. And, you know, if we add development on development on development in that piecemeal way, we can easily miss the bigger picture of essentially how some of these watershed problems have occurred in the past and kind of perpetuate that in the future. I think the bar at this point, because we know so much more about the state of our waterways and the Powhatan Creek area, I think the state of play at the moment means that the bar is much higher in terms of the amount of information that we need at this stage to make this kind of a dramatic rezoning decision in terms of, you know, what is happening in the environmental, you know, in the natural environment in this area that's slated for some quite significant development. I think the bar is pretty high. So I would like to see more thorough coverage of those likely impacts and plans for mitigation. You know, I similarly do not expect, you know, this applicant to solve all of the harms of the past. That's completely unreasonable. But I do think that there is, you know, a higher standard to be met today on what an applicant needs to be able to show and prove and provide in terms of that preservation piece.
As their plan, stormwater would have to be approved by the county staff before they can do anything out there is designed to do. You know, the problem here is none of us up here are engineers, you know, who can... Look at these drawings here in this creek. Well, that's why we have a staff who works with, I think it's AES engineers, to resolve these issues so they do no harm. You know, with the situation with the state, nothing is going to happen here, but the state's going to sell this property. Something's going to happen here. I often wonder if the state could just, you know, approve this development, and then they just turn it over and say, well, here it is, folks. We've, you know, they didn't, and they sell it to them after it's all done. You know, I mean...
To that point, a question for staff. As I recall, the reason that this is public lands is that in order for it to be developed, the board of supervisors has to approve it. Is that correct?
Yes. Currently, this project could not be possible without the rezoning action.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unless the state fixes their problem, you know, we're going to be denying this, and the state is, you know, they're determined to sell this. I mean, I think we have to be pragmatic here.
I think the point that I was just trying to make is, in order for them to sell it, they'd have to have a rezoning for the use of it. And because it's public land, they have to come to the board for the approval. So they're not going to be able to sell it because of the rezoning piece. I mean, it's as simple as that. And so it'll either stay on the state thing and be what it is and not developed, which is an alternative I'm okay with.
So you're saying if we could turn all this stuff down, the state will be forced to fix the problem?
I don't know that they will. I don't know that. And I'll tell you why I kind of do that, is I tracked the total mission, total maximum daily load for York County, Williamsburg, Eastern State, and James City County, and what they're supposed to do to fix their problems, right? They have the same responsibilities, but they never did it because of the money issues. And we didn't start doing this until 2016 because we didn't have a dedicated fund. And so, you know, I understand the state's problem of not fixing their problems in the same way that we couldn't do that. But that doesn't erase the problem.
I appreciate the sentiments. And I think when I heard the community comments and the packet, absolutely was thorough. And I will say, on the surface, when I heard the community comments and then you have one, the, I'm sorry, the gentleman over here who, you know, you're all for it, you've been in communication, but then hearing you all speak very competing interests. And so back to just do no harm and not complicating something that's already complicated.
I think for me, certainly, this is an interesting project here where on one end, if you're trying to preserve the watershed, if you develop it, you could damage the watershed. On the other hand, you're going to be potentially penalizing the applicant so they can't develop it for reasons that are outside of their control. But I can certainly understand Mr. Polster's, the more global view of, and also from what others have said, that we'd be compounding the issue by developing this. And that's where I'm kind of struggling with that piece of it.
Other discussion, or I will entertain a motion. Mr. Polster?
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission deny rezoning 24-001. I'm sorry. Let me, excuse me. I would, I make the motion that the planning commission deny approval of Z 23-004 MP-23-001 Westwood Park rezoning.
All right, we have a motion to deny this application. Ms. Istenis, will you do a rule call vote, please?
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Everson?
Aye.
Mr. May?
Aye.
Dr. Haskins?
Aye.
Dr. Ullman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item on our agenda is planning commission considerations. I think our board of supervisors' coverage for May is Mr. Everson?
Nope.
Oh, no.
April.
Oh, sorry.
That's me.
Oh, sorry.
It's me.
Yes.
I'm in May.
Oh, all right, you're in May. Okay, so Mr. Everson is in May. And we have Mr. Polster in April. All right, excellent. Are there any other considerations or requests for this? And I would just personally like to thank Mr. Haldeman.
You still have planning directors' report and discussion.
Okay. Planning directors', planning directors' report?
I don't have anything additional. You've kind of covered the board of supervisors' coverage, just as a reminder. So, Mr. Polster, we'll see you next week.
Great, thanks, Ms. Istenis. And then planning commission discussion and requests? Any discussion, Mr. Polster?
This project and the Ford's Village were a real education for me in some of the questions that I asked about. And one of the things that I discovered when I spouted out 23-Wood 24, which is the zoning piece, is that putting a stormwater master plan together is not a requirement. For, and why, I don't know. I mean, conceptually, you'd want to see something about this for. And so I really was kind of stumped on that. And so part of the process that I also discovered when I pulled the SPLN piece, which is the second time I've done one of these, is that it's too late. You know, to be able to... You know, to, to be able to say yea or nay or, or whatever. And, and what's disturbing about that is that, uh, things are changing as we're going along here for it. And so one of the things that, that was not germane to this, but, uh, besides the watershed master plan, it was an update to our stormwater special criteria, uh, which would apply to this, which is how they got some of the bonus bonuses. But you may have heard the one proviso in there of the outfall at 100-year. And it was based on the notion of the 20% increase in rate because of the outfalls. And so a lot of the issues that we see in our stream restoration projects are, are by the outfall. Okay, but there is other reasons that it occurs there. So, so we're slowly moving to try to correct these things, but we still haven't gotten to the point where we're sizing these things to meet the changes in climate change for it. And, and that's still to come. So my first request is for the staff to consider changing that 23 whatever. Let me make sure I got it up correctly. Is so that a master plan comes to us with a stormwater master plan as opposed to being, uh, an option where they didn't have to do it. Okay, so we would now.
I, I, can I comment on that?
Sure. That's section 24-23, submittal requirements underneath chapter 24 of the zoning general. Go ahead.
You want them to have a stormwater plan at this point?
A conceptual stormwater management plan, exactly. So you could see where they were planning. I mean, one of the history things of this project was when they did their initial submission to the stormwater guys and the documents that were there, it had a stormwater facility up by the border where it's buffered, right? The entire, they said, why would you put one there when the entire terrain slopes away? And so how is it you're going to be able to catch it? Because these stormwater plants work on gravity, right? Okay, so where, where are they going to put it? Well, you saw in the Ford's Village exactly what they had to do in terms of the excavation because most of the terrain that we're talking about are plateaus that are on a ridge with slopes off because of the rivers. Okay, and, and so when you look at the SPLN, the detailed plans on there, it's remarkable the amount of engineering work that it's gone through. Do that. Now, I'm not asking for that, but I want to see conceptually about how this is going to work, where the outfall is going to come out, what the impact is. And so we have, in the last two, uh, stormwater solar farms, put in a condition that in fact monitors the creek and the outfall for about 10 years. And, and that's to be able to make sure over time, it does what it's supposed to do. And it holds them liable for fixing it.
I, I have, I don't have a problem with that, but I would, would not support it. Don't think it's a good idea to require so much, you know, so much of the stormwater stuff. You're, you're talking, this stuff costs real money. And I don't, I don't think putting so many regulations on the front end before you even have approval. That's why, you know, with the stormwater management program here, before they can start anything, have to be approved, that's fine with me. But you're, you're, you're kind of asking for them to have this upfront. I mean, let's, this is why.
In the same way the Ford's Village, because that's why I showed you the first one. Okay, it was part of their SUP package. And in the same way, the part of the SUP package for the solar farms were in there, as well as many others. Because it's a prudent thing to do.
Well, you're right. If you put something in there to have it, you know, reviewed periodically, that's one thing. But having all this stuff upfront, you know, this is one of the reasons we ended up with national developers here and, and not having local developers because we have all these requirements upfront. They can't afford it. They can't get the money from the banks. And so we end up with, with, you know, out of, these out of towns. All the, all the, all the developers who built a lot of the areas that are here were local. They're gone because, because of these kind of regulatory requirements that cost a lot of money upfront. You know, it's, you know, once you say you're going to do stormwater, which they have to do, then they do it on the back end before they do anything with some kind of provision going forward that it has to work. I think it's unreasonable.
Well, you're certainly welcome to your opinion and, and there is a difference of that, but that's my request for it. The, the other piece that I wanted to insert in this thing was the affordable housing piece. And you probably saw in my conversations going back and forth with staff, I said, because, because I remember this when we went through the comp plan, is we rescinded the housing opportunity policy. We don't have, those are, don't have a policy. Okay, but I would agree with Mr. Holt that when we put it into the density bonus for mixed use, because we didn't have anything like having, not being able to do anything. So that would penalize the 30, 60 and 80%. The piece that I would like the staff to take a look at is how we go about taking the 120% out. And, and once again, I'm not, it gets to what is workforce housing? And if a person who's making $126,000 and 120% gets that, as opposed to most of the people that we're trying to get to have incomes of less than $50,000 that really needed them. So to your point, Crystal, is a starting teacher in James City County makes $45,000. And the reason that she has a problem with getting a rep is because she has to find somebody else. And, and so the cheapest that they can come up with is the ones that I talked about are two rivers. And it isn't like what they're suggesting at the recruiter was out of bounds in terms of, of other things. So how is it that we should, what I wanted to do is say, hey, could you take that 120%, those rooms and filter it into the 60 and the 80?
We can't do that because.
Can't, can't do it because of that. And so what I'm asking the staff to do is please look at some way to take out of a density bonus, the 120%. I disagreed when we went into it before and I still disagree with it and I know Mr. Haldeman does too. So I'm just asking, let's go back and take a look at it. And so if we're going to do affordable housing, let's do the 30, 60 and the 80%. But 120% doesn't make any sense to me at all. And, and especially when you take a look at what employees are being paid in James City County from starting the middle. I mean, there's nothing there.
Well, and I would like to see the ratio of those that fall within those tiers. Because if there is a, if there is a tier and we have the number, if we're matching the appropriate number per the tier, then I think it makes sense, but I don't know that.
That's why I'm asking for a relook because it's a tool that we need. And I, I have no problem about using that tool for density bonus, okay? Because I think the county gets something out of it and it says it's important. So that's not, my issue is let's do something about the 120, 30, 60 and 80. I'm great with that. So that's my, my second request.
Just to, if I could just add to Frank's comment about the stream monitoring, I think, I think that's a great idea. Because I do, I, I am aware of a development, maybe it's five years old, I'm not sure when they developed it, but within five years, a, a stream has been like substantially eroded where there's trees caving in everywhere. And I had a friend that actually had adjacent, a property on that, on that stream. And they had the house since the eighties when they built it. And the change from that neighborhood made a huge impact, which is, I mean, I've seen it. I think monitoring would be a very wise way to go.
When we took a look at the last five stormwater plans, along with the Yarmouth one and the Dyoskin and, and the Powhatan, but to include the Ware Creek and Skimino, there were 95 stream restoration projects identified of the same caliber that we have a problem here. And we can't fix everything, but we got to start somewhere. And it shouldn't be the taxpayers that pay for all of it. And so if we're going to have new development, guess what? Fix the stream. Okay, I'm off my soapbox. God, terrible today.
Any other items for general discussion? I will just very briefly add, and I'm sorry for stepping on your planning director's report, Ms. Istenis. I just wanted to thank Mr. Haldeman, who is not with us this evening, and Mr. Polster for their help preparing me for the procedural aspects of this meeting, being that it's the first meeting that I've chaired. I needed a lot of guidance and thankfully there were only, you know, 10 to 20 hiccups in the, in the course of this meeting. But I definitely couldn't have gotten through it without that guidance, so I really appreciate it. I'm grateful for their wise, for their wise words, for their wisdom.
You know what's going to happen now?
Tell me.
You are going to be the next chair. You're experienced now.
I've been training, obviously.
Right.
So yes, thank you very much for that. In that case, I think I need a motion to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move with conditions.
What are the conditions? All right, great, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we have adjourned.